Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
Good evening, fellow council members and community members to this evening meeting of an online City Council Burbank meeting, Tuesday, January 2021. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public safety, council members will be participating in an online City Council meeting. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting in lieu of in-person attendance. The city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in City Council meetings. Will everybody please stand and rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam City Clerk. How you doing today?
Doing great. Good evening.
Outstanding. May I trouble you to please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
Present and accounted for.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Present.
Councilmember Springer?
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Talamontas?
Present.
And Mayor Frutos?
On the deck and ready to go to work.
Thank you.
There will be a one period of general public comment this evening. If you would like to participate, please call now at 818-8... Correction, 238-3335. Again, the phone number to call in during public comment right now is 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment period. Tonight, we will be adjourning in memory of Elaine Baird, who passed away peacefully at the age of 100 this past November, 100 years old. Born in Pocatello, Idaho, Elaine was the fifth child and only daughter of Lorena and Edgar de Vienna. Moving to Hollywood to pursue a career in the movies under the stage name Kay Morley, Elaine became one of the original Golden Girls, working with Danny Kaye in Up in Arms. She acted in countless westerns where she showed off her many talents, including her skills with horses. Her films included Six Gun Servants, Trails End, and Campus Honeymoon, where she met her first husband, actor Richard Crane. They had two daughters, Susan and Catherine. After Richard's passing in 1969, Elaine left the entertainment business and worked in management for Bullock's department stores. After a brief retirement, she was rehired by the company to open the Bullock's Palm Desert store, where she met future husband Lloyd Baird. Elaine's passions included traveling and volunteering at desert regional hospital. She remained active in her early 90s. Elaine will be remembered for her life... for her style, grace, charm, and wit, along with her mantra, "To always be kind." Elaine is survived by her two daughters, son-in-law, former Burbank Mayor Michael Hastings, three grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. At this time, I would like to invite Elaine's daughter Catherine Hastings to say a few words. Catherine, the mic is yours.
Here we are.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. The mic is yours. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. I want to thank you so very much for this wonderful tribute to my mom. And Sharon, thank you so much for spearheading this. My mom was quite a lady, and she certainly gave both Michael and I a lot of good advice while he was in office. And she worked hard and she was... loved her sister. One thing she had to do before she passed on was very proud of her for doing so. So...
I was in office. If I could be a stunt woman and be... yeah, be married to a... oh, it's a wonderful woman. A woman's woman, a strong, strong, driving influence in our lives. Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you very much.
Very kind of you all.
Thank you. Our condolences as a City Council and as a community, we're here. Thank you, Mrs. Hastings.
Thank you.
Ms. Hastings, for joining us this evening. Council conveys our deepest condolences on the loss of your mother, and I urge my fellow community members to follow in Elaine's spirit of kindness, compassion, and volunteerism. We have now five announcements on city business this evening. Due to the expected rain this week, parking restrictions will begin in place on Country Club Drive from 12 noon Thursday through 12 noon Friday. Again, I'll repeat that for our members up in the hillside. Due to the expected rain this week, parking restrictions will be in place on Country Club Drive from 12 noon Thursday through 12 noon Friday. Please help us keep those roadways clear for emergency vehicles. Thank you so much for helping us. The City Clerk's Office is currently open for passport services. Processing times for routine service is 10 to 12 weeks, and expedited service is four to six weeks. Please visit burbankca.gov/passport. Again, the website is burbankca.gov/passport to schedule an appointment or call the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851. Again, the phone number to the City Clerk's Office is 818-238-5851. The City Clerk's Office is also accepting walk-ins Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Processing times and accommodations for walk-ins are subject to change. Third item. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for one vacancy on the Board of Library Trustees for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2022. The deadline to submit an online application for the vacancy is Wednesday, February 24 at 5:00 p.m. Again, the deadline, if you're interested in applying for this position with the Library Board of Trustees, is Wednesday, February 24 at 5:00 p.m. For more information about the position, please contact the City Clerk's Office or visit on the internet burbankca.gov/bccapplication. Again, via email, burbank... or in this case, internet, burbankca.gov/bccapplication. And please get it in before 5 o'clock. Item number four. City Council will hold a goal-setting special meeting on Wednesday, tomorrow, January 27 at 1:30 p.m. The public is invited to attend to view the meeting online or on television on Spectrum Channel 6 or AT&amp;T Channel 99. Please refer to the posted agenda for further details on how to call in for public comment period. Item number five. LA County is providing free COVID vaccines to all residents in phases. Burbank residents who are 65 years and older are now eligible to receive the vaccine. To register for an appointment, call 833-540-0473. Again, the phone number to receive a free vaccine, please call 833-540-0473 or visit on the internet vaccinetelacounty.com. Again, the website is vaccinetela county.com. Residents can also check their eligibility through the state's online portal. The website is myturn.ca.gov. Again, the state of California's portal for the vaccine, myturn.ca.gov. For more information, residents can call the Burbank City COVID-19 hotline at 818-238-5580. Again, if you have a question, you can call us here at the city regarding vaccine COVID-19, and we'll have an employee help you out to give you the information you need. Please call 818-238-5580. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I do have one item. With the outdoor dining being allowed again beginning this Friday, I would like to have our Community Development Director, Patrick Prescott, briefly discuss our plans for San Fernando Boulevard as we try to help facilitate outdoor dining in the downtown. So if I could have Mr. Prescott provide us an update on our plans.
Good evening, Mr. Prescott.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Frutos and members of the City Council. Good to see you all. I'm happy to report to you the immediate plan of action for San Fernando Boulevard and downtown Burbank that's been developed by the Public Works Department, Police, Fire, and Community Development Department. All businesses with existing permits for dining on the sidewalk in downtown Burbank will be permitted to place their tables and chairs there consistent with their permits beginning at 11:59 p.m. this Friday, effectively Saturday. That's the county's rule there, when the county health order will allow outdoor dining to recommence. And then, next Tuesday morning, Public Works crews will begin installing K-Rail between the on-street parking in front of the businesses and between that and the roadway in multiple areas along San Fernando Boulevard. When that is complete, there will be areas for the city to place our tables and chairs for use by any and all, as well as separate areas for those restaurants with permits for dining on the street. This will not involve the full closure of San Fernando Boulevard, as was done previously. This is a hybrid approach, and it is consistent with what the majority of businesses on San Fernando supported when the Community Development Department's economic development team conducted a survey recently. As of this morning, we have already spoken to every business in downtown Burbank that has an existing sidewalk dining permit, and they are all eager to reopen this weekend. Last year, the City Council directed staff to develop a plan for the permanent modification of San Fernando Boulevard in downtown Burbank. Any future plans will be presented to Council and will be consistent with the citywide Complete Streets Plan, which was adopted by the City Council last year. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. So I just want to clarify that at 11:59 p.m., Friday night, people can look forward that on Saturday night, they can go out with their special loved one, family, and they can hopefully find their favorite restaurant, not full, but they can do outdoor dining basically Saturday night.
That's correct.
Not Friday night.
Not Friday night. So the county will allow that? That means that not just the sidewalks where they have sidewalk dining permits, but also in the private patios and the parking areas, private parking areas that have been modified for dining as well.
Outstanding. I'm looking forward to going out Saturday night and having dinner, my favorite steak.
Likewise.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick, for the update.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Moving on to presentations this evening. Tonight, we have a presentation of an update from the Metropolitan Water District. We are joined by Burbank's appointee to the MWD Board, former Mayor Mrs. Marcia Ramos. Good evening, ma'am. You have the mic.
Good evening. Can you see my screen?
No, not yet. I can see you, but not your screen yet.
I tend to have this problem, you know.
Yeah.
Go on scan.
Okay, we got your screen, ma'am.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Frutos.
Good evening.
It's good to be together.
Yes.
And good evening, members of the City Council, staff, and members of the viewing public. Before I present the 2020 Year in Review, I would like to provide a brief overview of the Metropolitan Water District. MWD delivers reliable and high-quality water to the Southern California region in an environmentally and economically responsible way. MWD imports water from the Colorado River via the Colorado River Aqueduct in Northern California through the California Aqueduct State Water Project to supplement local supplies. MWD helps its member agencies to develop increased water conservation, recycling, storage, and other resource management programs. To supply Southern California with reliable and safe water, MWD owns and operates an extensive range of capital facilities, including the Colorado River Aqueduct, 16 hydroelectric facilities, nine reservoirs, 830 miles of large-scale pipes, three solar power facilities, and five water treatment plants. It is an honor to represent the City of Burbank for the past six years on the Board of Directors. The City of Burbank is one of the founding cities. MWD is a regional water wholesaler that delivers water to 26 member agencies and 19 million people across Southern California consisting of six counties. We meet formally three days a week... three days a week. Three days per month. I currently serve on the Executive Committee, the Finance Committee, and I'm Chair of the Audit and Ethics Committee. Like many board members, I attend all committee member meetings regularly. A new year provides an ideal opportunity to highlight some of the board actions and updates from last year. We all know it was a year to life no other, yet it is refreshing to know that critical and essential services were successfully sustained by many public service dedicated people. So these are the areas that I'm going to cover. MWD has a strong commitment to emergency planning and innovation. This commitment has helped MWD rise to the challenges in water management and delivery through this COVID public health and economic crisis. Our external affairs group has done extensive outreach to communicate our water treatment processes to ensure the public that our water is safe. And when it's delivered to our member agencies, we've taken everything into consideration. And like Burbank and every other public agency, our board meetings are conducted virtually, but we've managed to attract a good amount of public comment. In fact, I think it was in November, we had about three and a half hours of public comment. But it's important to get input on these important issues. Additionally, MWD has made virtual facility tours available and water education for students available online, and it can be accessed through the website, mwdh2o.com. And these online opportunities, look for them under the Education tab. Last year at this time, I hosted an inspection trip for Burbankers that included a tour of the Regional Recycled Water Demonstration Plant. Wow, things have changed since then. Since that time, further progress has been made in testing and monitoring. Last year, the board authorized funding of the environmental planning phase that will help with further assessment of constructing a full-scale regional recycling water plant. A full-scale plant would allow Southern California to reduce its reliance on imported supplies and replenish groundwater basins, as well as produce clean water for industrial and eventually direct potable use. A one-hour virtual tour of the center will be available this Thursday at 2:00. And if you're interested, please visit the MWD Facebook page for the link to register or email me, and I'd be happy to send you the link, but I've provided it here on this Currently, the state water project, which some of you have had the opportunity to see firsthand up in the Bay Delta area, supplies nearly one-third of Met's water supply. Clearly, at this time, the state water project is an important resource for Southern California. In July 2020, Governor Newsom released a final version of his administration's water resilience portfolio. The portfolio outlines 142 state actions to help build a statewide climate-resilient water system. It establishes regional priorities that align challenges with opportunities for water-focused innovations like conservation, replenishing aquifers, direct potable reuse, and more. Identified as a priority in the portfolio is a single-tunnel project, Delta Conveyance System, which would serve to increase the long-term reliability of the state water project by protecting its water supply against sea level rise, climate change, and seismic events. Last month, the Board of Directors unanimously authorized the General Manager to execute agreements for funding of $58.9 million at a 47% share, which is the same as our current allocation. And this is for planning and pre-construction costs for the Delta Conveyance System. The Colorado River has been a pillar of Southern California's imported water supply for nearly 80 years. It provides about 25% of the water used in Metropolitan's service area. Over the years, demands for the Colorado River water have grown, supplies from the river have not, resulting in an imbalance that will likely grow as climate warms. However, this past year, due to agricultural and urban conservation efforts, California diverted the lowest amount of water in 70 years. In addition, Nevada and Arizona also stockpiled water in Lake Mead, raising the elevation at Lake Mead by nine feet despite the reduced water releases from Lake Powell. So clearly, storage exchange and baling and crop rotation agreements are critical tools in water management along the Colorado River. Despite a decade with two severe droughts, including a year with the lowest snowpack in over 1,500 years, Metropolitan began 2020 with the highest storage balance in its history. Record reserves included 979,000 acre-feet of intentionally created surplus storage in Lake Mead. Reducing demands and enhancing conservation efforts enables Metropolitan to safeguard against future droughts by keeping more water in storage. Metropolitan reinstated its $2 per acre per square foot incentive under its turf replacement program. Turf removal in the region increased by 84% from the previous year. Metropolitan also completed a disadvantaged communities regional pilot program that replaced toilets in pre-1995 apartment buildings and began two pilot programs on using stormwater for direct use and groundwater recharge. This slide presents the water storage levels in reservoirs across the state. And as you can see at the bottom, MWD is in pretty good shape in terms of their reservoirs. And this is as of December 31, 2020. At Metropolitan, planning is critically important. Last year, MWD began the process of developing the Integrated Water Resources Plan. The IRP, first initiated in 1996, is a long-term and diversified water strategy. The planning document, which is updated every five years, will help Metropolitan adapt to changing conditions by driving by emerging challenges. Planning for regional reliability is the cornerstone of the IRP. MWD has been working closely with member agencies in scenario planning. This approach seeks to forecast future water supply and demand needs over a 25-year timeframe. I appreciate very much Burbank Water and Power's Assistant General Manager's participation in this planning effort. Work continues on the Climate Action Plan, which will provide a portfolio approach to reducing greenhouse gas emissions with the end goal of achieving carbon neutrality by 2045. This planning document will guide policy decisions on operations, water resources, capital investments, conservation, and local resource programs, and help the region adapt to climate change. A draft program, EIR, and draft Climate Action Plan was released for public comment last In April of 2020, and after a review of detailed financial information, robust discussion of financial policies, and a public hearing, the MWD Board adopted a $2.8 billion biannual budget. In response to lower water sales and the economic impacts of COVID-19, the Board limited rate increases overall to 3% effective this month, January 2021, and 4% effective January 2022. Initially, we had projected, when we began the budget process, of being at 5%. So the Board asked staff to cut expenditures while maintaining essential investments in water reliability and safety. The Board will begin to review and assess rates in the coming months. Each member agency has the opportunity to be part of the working group and provide insight. I continue to work closely with Burbank Water and Power Assistant General Manager Richard Wilson and his staff to evaluate any and all proposed changes, keeping top of mind impacts to Burbank. Again, I value his expertise, perspective, and engagement on many of the important MWD As Chair of the Audit and Ethics Committee, I led the subcommittee that interviewed, evaluated, and recommended to the Board the hire of our new Ethics Officer, Abel Salinas. He has brought depth and valuable experience to the Ethics Office, and he has strengthened educational efforts on ethical matters. educational efforts on ethical matters. Next month, the Board will consider adoption of a significant amount of changes in the administrative code regarding policies and procedures related to ethics in our code. And our code is like your city charter. This past year, Metropolitan has recommended to practices and values that promote diversity, equity, inclusion, and acceptance for all forms of gender, race, ethnicity, age, sexual identity, and orientation, abilities, and veteran status. Metropolitan engaged in discussion forums and efforts to promote a cultural assessment, recognize biases, and broaden outreach to promote careers in the water section. Through this work and under the leadership of Board Chair Gloria Gray, Metropolitan strives to improve organizational culture and embed socially responsible principles and practices. At MWD, and at this time, we're at a crossroads on so many issues. Leadership is vital in these times of organizational change and evolution. Our current General Manager, Jeff Kitelinger, announced his retirement, ending a 14-year tenure as one of the longest, as the longest-serving General Manager in Met's history. In 2021, the recruitment and hiring of a new General Manager is one of the most important determinations our Board will make. I look forward to working on the Executive Committee and with all my colleagues on the Board of Directors in bringing on board a new General Manager that can successfully navigate and innovate to best meet many challenges before us. So with that, I thank you for your time and look forward to when we can do an inspection trip. It probably won't be until next year, but it's an honor to serve the city of Burbank.
Thank you, Madam Director, Councilmembers. Anybody have any comments, questions for our Director? Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
Ms. Ramos, it's good to see you. Thank you for your report. And I was wondering how far away from direct potable recharge is MWD? And if you could explain what direct potable recharge is? Or briefly, in a nutshell?
Okay. We are tracking legislation that will allow for direct potable reuse. And as part of the planning process for our regional recycled water treatment plant, the full facility, we have integrated that possibility, and we do believe it could be very possible, into the planning process. But it is very dependent on further research and the finalization of legislation that would permit that to be done. So I hope that answers your question.
And what does that result in? Direct potable recharge?
It results in the availability to take water, and it would take, because we have this partnership with the Los Angeles County Department of Sanitation, so it's wastewater. So it will be cleaned through a scientific process using membranes that are at the highest level. I think you saw some of those membrane processes when you were there last January, and clean it to the point where it would be treated so it can come right out of your faucet and you'd be able to drink it.
Councilmembers. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Wilson. Good evening and welcome.
Sure. So there's the recharge that you're talking about, which allows to put recycled water into the ground, and the ground is used as an environmental buffer to clean the water, and you can later pull that water out and treat it. That's indirect potable reuse. Direct potable reuse is what Marsha was referring to, where you can directly treat the recycled water so that when it leaves the plant, it's drinkable. And like Marsha said, we're a few years away from having those regulations in place. We did do a study, my staff did a study, and we looked at a study as far as what it would take to have a system like that in place, and the cost was approximately $35 million for design and construction, and it would yield about just under 2 million gallons a day. So it would be something very expensive to do, and the regulations are not yet in place. We're keeping a close eye on it, and we are looking always to partner with our neighbors. Perhaps we can sell our recycled water and somebody else might put it in their direct potable reuse plant, for example. So there's a number of things that we're looking at with our neighbors, and we're keeping a close eye on the possibilities. But it's certainly a big key to our future in terms of resilience for Burbank.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilmembers? I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Director.
Just speaking of working with neighbors, that is what MWD does. So just, was it this month? I think just this month, the Board agreed, no, it was December, the Board agreed to partner with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, and they are going to contribute financially to the environmental process, environmental planning for the regional recycled water treatment plant. Should this regional water recycled treatment plant move forward, it would be the largest in the nation.
Any other councilmember? Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. It was an excellent presentation. We know that, you know, water is not, you know, where we get our water and how we get it is not just an environmental issue, it's an economic issue, it's a cultural issue, especially with regards to the native land that these rivers travel through. In your opinion, the administrative code updates and the organizational structural changes, where do you think that came from? And where do you see this going with regards to diversity, equity, inclusion?
Okay. The administrative code updates that are, the Board is going to consider that are pretty extensive are related primarily to the Ethics Office. The Ethics Office was created out of state legislation. It's called AB 60, Assembly Bill 60, quite some time ago, a couple decades ago, I believe. And we are mandated to have an Ethics Office. It has certainly evolved over time, but the reason being is an ethical culture is very important in the delivery of water across the state. MWD is an enormous organization, and we do a lot of contracting with private entities, a lot of partnerships with public entities, a lot of political interactions. It is of utmost importance that we maintain a very ethical culture. And when the guidelines need to be improved, expanded, and reevaluated, they should be. And that's what we've undertaken, and it's been, well, an 18-month process at least.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And former Mayor Ramos, thank you so much. That was an incredibly detailed presentation. It frankly answered nearly every question that I had, and I just wanted to echo how crucial this issue is. You know, access and conveyance to potable water is really something that matters now, and it certainly matters to our future. And one thing I wanted to just ask with regards to, on Slide number six, the virtual tour that's taking place this week, just to confirm, that's open to anyone in the public? Anyone can participate?
It is. It is. I've shared the link on my Facebook page, and I hope that you will too. So I encourage all of you to visit Facebook and like the Metropolitan Water District Facebook page, and there you will find the link.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Telemontes, you have the mic, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Mayor, thank you very much. As always, very detailed reports when you come before us. Things are looking good. Obviously, the retirement of, it's not a good thing to look forward to because obviously, when you go through a selection process, it's lengthy and it's very detailed, and you've got to come up with the best candidate possible that fits our needs. But anyway, thank you very much for giving us the update. And as always, I always find it very entertaining and very informative. Thank you.
My pleasure, and I just hope we find the right fit. It's critical for our future.
Madam Director, you've covered a lot of my questions I was going to ask, but the one question I'm curious is the spillway up north. Has it been repaired? And I was on the inspection tour with you that year, and a couple months later, it broke. I was just wondering if there's an update on that spillway.
From my recollection, the majority, there might be some small things that need repair, and I know that the disaster funding and all of the costs have not, and who will pay what has not been finalized. But I believe the majority of the repairs have been completed.
Okay. And then, I know you covered in your presentation, but the tunnels up north, the tunnels, a little update on that?
Well, the governor has included in his water resilience portfolio the modernization of the state water project that would be one tunnel. In the past, in 2018, I came before you to talk about the twin tunnel project. Now it's a single tunnel.
Okay. Madam Director?
And that's what we approved in December was, because before we can do the full assessment, and we need to do the environmental planning, so that's what we allocated the money to do, is to do the environmental planning that will look at all the technical details, and then from that information, we will be able to make an informed decision on whether we move forward or not. It's a lot of work, and time is ticking, and as time passes by, it seems to get more and more expensive. So I hope, and the risks are there. In reality, there is predicted that there will be a seismic event in the next 30 years of an earthquake in the Delta of 6.7, size 6.7 earthquake in the Delta. And you think 30 years. Well, let me just tell you, as I reflect, I was thinking about Councilmember Anthony and Councilmember Schultz. You know, this is the, you know, this is their first year on the council. It was only 20 years ago, it was 20 years ago that I was first on the council, and I was like, 20 years goes by so fast. We have to do something. We have to move on this Delta. Reliability depends on it.
It was a real eye-opener when I joined you on that inspection trip and getting firsthand experience and education about the importance of those tunnels. So I thank you for that. If there's anything else, I'll close this part of the agenda. Madam Director, anything, words of parting of the council before we move on?
Just to say, I'd be happy to meet with any member of the council should you have further questions or curious about any particular issues. Thank you.
Madam, Madam, former Mayor Ramos, thank you for your time and representing us, because I know I've been in lengthy conversations with you right after meetings, and I always appreciate your input and where your thoughts are, and I like it that you involve me. Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation this evening, and keep up the good work for the people of Burbank. Thank you, ma'am.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, moving on. Next item. Madam City Attorney, can you please report on a closed session item this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the public, the council met on closed session this evening on one matter, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54, 956.9 subsection G1. The case was Cabrera versus the City of Burbank, personal injury action, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Members of the public, now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the council on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you would like to participate, please call in now at 818-238-3335. Again, if you wish to call in and be part of the public comment period, please call And please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes, and we ask for your patience as we finish up with one speaker and move to the next one. To participate again, please feel free and call 818-238-3335. Again, the phone number to call in is 818-238-3335. Madam City Clerk, Ms. Mullins, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have six callers in queue right now. So we're ready to go.
Beam them down.
Our first caller is Phil Dojic. Phil, you're live with council.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have some interesting suggestions that you will like. A proposal for the Witten Park to install floodlights on existing electric poles for the reason that it's very dark at night, dark at hours, many people walk to rest and do physical exercise. A proposal to close the street, San Fernando Road, from the City of Burbank Shopping Mall to Angelino Street, to traffic after this pandemic story, and to make that part of the city for social and cultural life. Shops and restaurants will be open in and out with many fun attractions. Set up space for small music groups. In doing so, tourism for foreign citizens will be fully developed. The transportation system will be planned efficiently in that case. The parking system is around sufficiently developed, and if it's not, we will add more. A proposal regarding the bringing of large music groups with famous singers, the places where the same will be held should be determined. A proposal to change the decision on the legal use of drugs in the city to illegal. In some parts of the city, a strong smell is felt, and it has detrimental effect on the citizens, and it is impossible to breathe. It is probably used by citizens to great nervousness and for low earnings and high cost of living, high prices for buying houses and renting apartments. It is also leads to major traffic accidents and other abnormal moves in life. If that doesn't change, we will see guys in angry cars driving in the streets 90 miles per hour, where prescribed 35 or 40 miles per hour. As for the gasoline economy, in the last few days, has increased by 12%, is not good for citizens. Unemployment is still present, the minimum wage is the same, the cost of living increases with increasing gasoline prices. It's been a year since we and the whole world have been fighting the virus COVID-19, and to this day, we do not know who is responsible for this virus. It is necessary to find the culprit and initiate criminal proceedings against them. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
Our next caller is Linda Besson. Linda, you're live with council.
Good evening, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Prutos, and council members. Tonight's City Council is considering the renewal of the mask ordinance that was passed by council on September 15th. It is worth reminding council and the public that during that discussion, two current members of council were opposed to the ordinance, and one even said that passing this would turn Burbank into a police state. When they realized they were outnumbered on the vote, the two members insisted that the emphasis of the ordinance be education, not enforcement. This lack of will leading to a lack of leadership shown on September 15th resulted in tin-horn flats, flaunting as a violation of our laws and fundraising on its belligerence. It has resulted in Burbank gyms and martial arts studios illegally operating at capacity and with impunity. Even worse than all this, Burbank has been subjected to people from outside of Burbank who have invaded our businesses, got into people's faces, and deliberately used the fact that they are not wearing a mask as an act of aggression. They provoked because they knew nothing would be done to them. And indeed, there were no consequences for any of these people, even with thousands of cases in Burbank and as of today, 167 deaths. We are now almost 11 months into this crisis. The excuse of people needing education about masks can no longer be made. Our call on council to show leadership... A call on council to show leadership, protect our citizens, and not only renew this ordinance, but enforce it to show you care about what happens in our community. In regard to the proposed cap on third-party delivery fees, I urge you to vote yes on this proposal. We have talked so much about supporting our local restaurants, and this is one definite way we can immediately act to help them. We are in the midst of winter, and many will not want to partake in outdoor dining, even with the restaurants opening for that. This is not a revolutionary proposal. Many cities here in Southern California and across the state haven't already, have already enacted this cap on delivery fees. Please help our small locally owned restaurants by passing this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Besson. Next caller.
Our next caller is Elliot Thompson. Elliot, you're live with council.
Good evening.
Good evening. My questions are directed to Mr. Anthony. During your entire campaign, I would agree that you made it perfectly clear you are a democratic socialist. My questions to you have nothing to do with that, so I would appreciate your not mentioning it in your responses. Over the past few weeks, it has become known throughout Burbank that after you're assuming your seat on council, you announced that you are a Trotsky communist. My questions are as follows. Why did you not disclose that you are a communist during your campaign? People are aware of a small rose placed somewhere in a flyer, but your assertion that that rose was proper notification for all to see and learn that you are a Trotskyist is absurd. My opinion, and the opinion of many people in Burbank who are just learning about all of this, is that you felt such a disclosure would be a significant negative for your campaign, so you held back until after you were sworn in. With that information being given out prior to the election, I wonder if voters would have chosen another candidate. I find your actions to be dishonest, a lie of omission, and an intentional act of avoidance and deception upon the citizens of Burbank. Please explain yourself. When you took an oath of office, you swore allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. As a Trotsky communist, were you lying when you swore that oath? Again, please explain the contradiction. How do you reconcile your primary and absolute obligation to our Burbank residents under our constitution to that of the global network of Trotsky communism which is dedicated to permanent revolution? Please explain. And lastly, a major and growing concern among many Burbank citizens is the positions taken by the Burbank Democratic Club, which supported you, and Assemblywoman Laura Friedman, who made her support of you very clear during the reorganization. Prior to the election, did you disclose to the club and Ms. Friedman that you are a Trotsky communist? If they were aware of your political loyalties, then their support of you is a major problem for them. Mr. Anthony, I hope you realize how concerning all my questions are to a growing segment of our city. We all look forward to hearing your responses. Thank you.
Next caller, Madam City Clerk.
Coming through.
Okay. Beam them down.
Our next caller is Scott Myers. Scott, you're live with council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mr. Frutos and city council members. My call is about Mr. Anthony as well. Mr. Anthony, you're, you're on the city council of a prominent and well-respected and operated city. You are in a position to possibly become mayor of Burbank. People will believe things that you say simply because of your position. You ran for and won a policymaking position. You therefore have a duty of the utmost candor in your communication. Seven days ago, you and I exchanged comments on Nextdoor. It started with me asking you if you were a Marxist or an anarchist. You responded that you were a Trotskyite. I would bet that you know that many people have no idea what a Trotskyite is. When you were asked on Sunday at your online meeting, you claimed you never hid your political beliefs because it was there to be seen that you were a democratic socialist, like AOC and Bernie Sanders. The democratic socialist movement does not proclaim itself to be an actual communist movement, but it is so ill-defined that it can actually be anything you want. Many people conjure up images of Portugal, Spain, France, et cetera. None are communist companies, none are communist countries. Clearly Bernie Sanders and AOC and the rest have never admitted to being communists, although people do wonder about their actual mindset and their desired end game. We wonder about yours. Trotsky was a Bolshevik Marxist Leninist communist. You admitted to being so. Nothing in your campaign ever fessed up to being in such a mindset. No one thought they were voting for a communist. You also referenced MLK in suggesting he was a socialist and therefore bordering on Trotskyism. But the Stanford MLK Institute would tell you that you are quite ill-informed, ill-informed for saying so. I would bet that everybody logged on here is in disbelief that we are even talking about communism after what this country and the world went through for the last century with communism. And please know that no one in Burbank has ever succeeded in their lives because of communism, nor wants to end the right to private property or build a company like the next Disney, Netflix, Apple, et cetera. So dear Mr. Anthony, I and others would like you to correct or confirm your statement. Fess up that you are either a communist or denounce it right here and state that you are really not a follower of Leon Trotsky. Remember your call, remember your obligation, pardon me. Remember your obligation of candor. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, next caller.
Our next caller is Alex Arseneega. Alex, you're live with council.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Frutos. Good evening, council members. Good evening, Burbank residents. Thank you for the free entertainment tonight. I wanted to address two things. One is a letter that I sent in with a lot of other Burbank residents regarding organics as we look forward to reduction of greenhouse gases. I really feel like Marcia Ramos like teed it up perfectly. I couldn't have planned for anything better. I think that as, as we look, look forward to mass implementation of rebuilding aquifers, we really need to see what we can do on a local and residential level. As the USDA has pointed out, so many of our aquifers are being depleted, and we don't have the surplus of rain as the East Coast does. So I, I think that a couple of things that we can look into are rain capture systems. And I'm hoping that the city can look to incentivize making sure rain gutters are installed, that we're recycling rain, that we're utilizing rainwater. I really do think that some of the turf rebates were short-sighted because the AstroTurf is not only leading to more heat and increase of heat islands, but it's also really messing with the percolation rates and the tree survival in the city of Burbank, among other places. We can't keep planting trees if the root structure will not survive due to lack of water. I really want to address soil carbon sequestration. And we need to really look at storing atmospheric, atmospheric carbon dioxide in order to play a part in global reduction of climate change. So that's one. I'm hoping that we can get more funding for outreach, increase in gardening during COVID. Can we take a look at water, how we can use recycled water and rebuild our soil so we can use the water to feed our crops? Second, I really want to address Burbank Police Department. I'm seeing a lot of movement on the federal and state level in regards to police reform. I'd like to see some leadership. We sent a letter over to council earlier today. I think it's a little short to have you guys review all of that. But we really, my second point on that is, oh, sorry, SROs. Can we please address SROs on the city council level? We know that the pipeline from school to prison starts early, especially with brown and black and low-income students. Let's really see what their value is. There's only been a handful of arrests and hundreds of counseling sessions. We need to know how their, how our students are being counseled and if the parents are informed of these counseling sessions. Lastly, we really need to take a look at the police commission. There is no transparency. We want to see the bios on the website. We have a current LAPD officer, a former police officer, a DA. We have a person, we have Mr. Chapman, who is a DHRC leader.
Ma'am, ma'am, your three minutes are over. I'm so sorry, but your three minutes are up. Next caller.
Our next caller is Jim Lane. Jim, you're live with council.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Jess Telemontes runs the City of Burbank Facebook group. Took me over two years to become a member of that group. I don't know why, never knew what the criteria was for getting admitted into that group. But it, over two years to the time, I became a member of that group. I didn't really use it that much until the last couple of months. I started to, this is what I learned through Jess Telemontes, City of Burbank Facebook group, that Joe Biden is a pedophile. Covid virus is fake. Tin Horn Flats is a great place to go, especially now. I learned a whole bunch of other things too, really interesting to hear, the red baiting going on right now with Mr. Anthony because a lot of these things were eventually taken down, but they had, had a shelf life on the Facebook group page. About a week ago, somebody posted a, a red baiting post about Constantine Anthony. And that went back and forth. And I believe that one, interestingly enough, is still on the Facebook group. It hasn't been taken down because it's, because it's damaging to someone at city council who might not agree with Mr. Telemontes. The Facebook, right now, this Facebook group is really a menace to our city, right? This is not a question of free speech, especially when posts are deleted and some aren't. It's really a question of how Jess Telemontes wants to manage the stuff that's going on on the Facebook page. So this is really not a question any longer of freedom of speech. This is really a question of public safety. The amount of QAnon misinformation that has lived on this Facebook, this Facebook group with the city of Burbank's name on it, with the administrator being a city council member. This is an embarrassment. It is a question, it go, it, it is pulling our city down. And yet, it is allowed to continue. Last time I brought this up, I believe Amy Albano's, I, I, it was crickets. And Amy Albano said something about freedom of speech. I, I, I'll bet it'll be crickets again. But I would love, I, you know, I, I, I've given up on even convincing Jess Telemontes to even listen to this, right? But I'd be interested to see, anyone else on the city council has an issue with this? Anyone, anybody else in the city council who actually sees what's going on on this face group, on this Facebook group, you know, site? It's appalling. And it's bringing our city down, and it, it is dangerous.
Mr. Lang, the three minutes is over. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, next caller.
Coming through.
Thank you.
Our next caller is William Bardelli. William, you're live with council.
Good evening.
Yes, hi. I have less of a comment and more of a question, I suppose. And I'm hoping this is the right approach to getting an answer to my question. I live near, somewhat near the Warner Ranch production facility. And I'm hearing rumors of it being redeveloped. And I'm trying to find out information as to what that redevelopment truly is and what the plans are. How does a Burbank citizen find out information such as that?
Any other questions, sir, or comment?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Thank you for calling in. I'm going to have, when everything's over, I will have the city manager respond to your question. Thank you for calling in. Madam City Clerk, next caller.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any more callers in queue, so it's safe to go ahead and close this session.
Okay. There being no, no callers in the queue, I now declare the public comment period closed. This is the time for council members to have a brief response if they wish, followed by the city manager and city attorney if they wish. Council members? Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's, it's so tough. We had a very divisive election nationwide back in November. And we even had people try to overturn that election just a couple of weeks ago. I, I really believe that, you know, when people run for office, they're running on the issues. And personal attacks or what people believe in or where they come from or their, you know, philosophy on global economics, it comes second to the real tangible issues of what faces people in the district that they're running. And if it's a city council district, what's going on in that city? You know, I, I always tell people to look at a very famous Trotskyist in Seattle City Council, Shama Sawant, a very intelligent woman of color who's won her election three times. She's a doctorate in, in economics. And the people in that city, you know, they were worried when she first got in. Sure, sure, sure. But once she started doing the work of a council member, people realized all of that big stuff, it doesn't matter, right? I believe in aliens. I read my horoscope. I don't bring that with me to city council when we're in this debate. I don't think little green men are going to come down and then fix our housing problems and, and change the way we, we, you know, build our roads and fill potholes. So really, at the end of the day, all I can say to people is, give it four years. Let me finish out this term. And if you think I've done something absolutely terrible, you know, we'll talk in four years. But, you know, let's, let's give it a minute. Take a breath, and let's see what happens. So I, I hope Elliot and Scott, you'll just, you know, give me just a couple of weeks, a couple more meetings to give me the benefit of the doubt. That's all I'm asking. If I'd have lost my campaign, which I did in 2017, I did the same with the people who won. I backed Sharon for the entire time she was in office.
Councilmember Anthony, it's supposed to be brief. If you wish to continue, follow up. Sorry, Mr. Anthony. Okay, thank you, council member. Next council member. See none? Oh, Councilmember Schultz, followed by Councilmember Springer.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to have Councilmember Springer go first.
Okay. Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
I'd like to thank everybody for calling in. It's very important. Some of the issues we'll discuss further on into the agenda. But I do want to state that I have always supported mask-wearing and have always supported compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will, some of these comments will be discussed in later agenda items. I just wanted to thank all of our callers for calling in. Mr. Dojic, for your comments as always, appreciate your participation. Ms. Arseneega, really appreciated your comments about incentivizing rainwater capture systems. And with regards to your comment about Burbank PD, the status of SROs in schools, the composition of the police commission, I'd just like to share that we will be having our joint meeting on February 9th. And I would absolutely encourage you to participate in that meeting. And I see, Mr. Mayor, that you already will have the city manager respond to our last caller.
Yes.
And that, that I think covers about everything. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank everybody for coming tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. Ms. Besson, you say show leadership. And I want to quote, your ordinance without enforcement is worthless. And I agree with you. I've been saying that all along. Education, we've done enough education. It's take, it's time to stake, take it to the next level. But I'm getting pushback. I hope my colleagues will, will agree with me down the road. And I agree also with the cap, but that'll be an item that we'll be discussing. Let's see, what else? SROs? I'm in favor of SROs. From many years ago, I extended my hand out saying that the city would pay 50% if the school district would pay 50% for SROs. And we were turned down. The school district didn't want to be any part of that. They said, we've never had to pay for SROs, and we're not going to start now. So that was, anyway. I want to appreciate that, and I'm all for it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prescott, you have the mic. I see you out there. If you can answer that community member's question about the Warner Ranch. Can't hear you, sir. Can't hear you, sir. Can't hear you, sir. Houston, we have a problem. Still can't hear you.
Okay.
Oh, now we can hear loud and clear, sir.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. I was trying to fix the high-pitched squeal that was being heard previously, and it made it worse, sorry. So I wanted to respond to the gentleman who asked about Warner Ranch. There are currently no plans to redevelop Warner Ranch. Warner Ranch is part of the land transaction that will take place at the completion of the Warner Brothers Second Century Project, where certain land will become the property of Warner Brothers at the old NBC Studios, and then the ranch will become, will be under new ownership, but the Warner Brothers Ranch property will have to be regulated by the existing planned development that is in place, and any change of use that happens at that property, the community will be made aware of absolutely. It's a significant, important piece of property, and particularly people immediately adjacent will know if something is proposed there.
Mr. Prescott, is there a website or somewhere that people can go if they've got a question on future development via the internet for questions?
I would recommend that they sign up for e-notify on the city website, and they can choose the categories of information they wish to receive notifications on. Planning and land use would be a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I wanna thank everybody for calling in. I'm gonna hold off on the regards to police commission stuff, because we got a joint meeting coming up next week, but these are good questions that were brought up by the speaker. And, you know, to Ms. Besson, I walk into every meeting open-minded, and I might walk in thinking, okay, I don't think I can support this, but my colleagues have changed my mind, and that's part of our democratic process and open, transparent government, that, hey, I can pretty much say what I view, but in the debate from my colleagues, they're able to change my mind, and in that decision, they changed my mind. So I appreciate your thoughts. I wanna say thank you. Moving on to the next item, consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted by one motion. Ms. Mullins, may you please read the consent calendar this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, item number one, recommendation to approve city council minutes of regular meeting of January 5th and January 12th, 2021, and the dark meeting of January 19th, 2021. Item two, annual review of planned development and development agreements. This concludes the items for consent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Vice Mayor Telemontes makes the motion. Councilmember Anthony is the second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a comment before we go.
You have the mic, sir.
Thank you very much. One recommendation I like to make to my colleagues is this item on number two, where we have updates. The last update was 2016, so I'd like to bring that more frequent, maybe every two years, to the council, so the council can be updated with what's happening as far as development is concerned.
You know, Mr. Telemontes, if you'd like, since you have the mic, can you explain for members in the audience what you're talking about?
It's item number two. It's a subject, annual review of planned developments and development agreements.
Okay.
The report states that the last time council had an update was 2016, and I just would like to make it more frequent, every two years, and just make it part of doing business. I guess that city manager would have to put it on his list, community development department would have to put it on their list, just to keep the council updated.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Anthony. Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic.
Yeah, knowing that it's been so long, I would actually like to pull item two for a full report at the end of the meeting, if that's all right.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, you have the mic?
Yeah, I totally agree with Vice Mayor's recommendation, and we would actually like to see if we could do it every year, so just, so you guys are updated. I think it's reasonable enough to do every year, which I think is a requirement anyway, so, you know, we were a little lax on that, but I'll get it, make sure that we're, you know, tracking it and get it on our follow-up list for every year.
Then, Mr. City Manager, do we have somebody from that department to be able to discuss this report at the request of Councilmember Anthony at the end of the next agenda item?
Absolutely. So per our rules, if an item is pulled from consent, that goes as the last report, so we'll put that as the third report tonight.
Good. You okay, that, Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Okay, so we will vote for the first item, then?
Yeah, I was gonna clarify that we're only voting for item number one.
And one is pulled for the end of the council meeting.
Correct.
You got it. Go ahead and call for the vote, ma'am.
Okay. Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
And Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frudus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports to council, this evening, we have two reports to the council this evening. Item number three, first, I would like to invite the acting police administrator, Courtney Paget, to present an update on the city's enforcement on face covering requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Courtney Paget, and I am the acting police administrator with the police department. This evening, I am providing an update on the city's enforcement of face covering requirements. Per the direction of council, on September 15th, 2020, the city implemented processes for the use of administrative citations and monetary fines for the enforcement of face covering requirements. Enforcement services were implemented on October 16th, 2020, through an agreement with a contracted vendor, Willdan Engineering. Willdan has prior experience in conducting face covering enforcement services in other cities, and was able to immediately provide trained, experienced, and professional staff for deployment within Burbank. As for the initial discussion with council, as well as in accordance with the regulations listed within the city's emergency proclamation, enforcement efforts have been focused on the highly populated areas of downtown, the Chandler Bike Way, the Magnolia Park Business District, and all city parks. The department conducts a daily debriefing with Willdan staff to review the day's enforcement activities and plan adjustments as needed based upon their feedback, any concerns received from members of the community, and input from other city departments. There is ongoing flexibility in the deployment of enforcement staff to include regular altering of scheduled days of the week, hours of the day, and locations based upon peak population times, and to address any identified concerns. Subsequent to the submission of the staff report, I would like to provide updated statistics regarding total enforcement activities through yesterday, January 25th, 2021. Contracted staff have made a total of 6,723 contacts with individuals observed in the community not in compliance with face covering requirements. These contacts have resulted in the provision of 6,043 warnings, 517 individuals who refused to cooperate, and the issuance of 163 administrative citations with a monetary fine. Staff have also distributed 228 face coverings. Payment has been received on 21 citations, with 13 appeals submitted and four citations dismissed during appeal hearings. A big number that is not included in those statistics is the number of community members observed who are in compliance with face covering requirements. Overall, enforcement staff have reported observing a high level of compliance throughout the city, and that most individuals are amenable to wearing a mask when instructed to do so. Staff have also stated that many individuals initially observed not wearing a mask will don one immediately when they observe the Willdan staff approaching, indicating the public's awareness of the face covering requirements and enforcement efforts. It is likely that these individuals would have continued to not wear a mask in the absence of this visible enforcement presence. The city has been very satisfied with the services provided by the vendor, and throughout over 6,700 community contacts, there has been only one received complaint. After 14 and a half weeks of enforcement efforts, the city is near the maximum cost of services allowable under the current agreement. The continued utilization of civilian contracted staff to conduct enforcement services provides an ongoing dedicated resource within the city for this purpose, allows for continued agility in staff deployment at a moment's notice, and alleviates the reallocation of sworn police personnel from performing essential public safety responsibilities. For comparative purposes, the City of Glendale has expended approximately $300,000 in sworn officer overtime to conduct face covering enforcement, and has issued a total of 140 citations. The city is exploring cost savings potentially available through FEMA for reimbursement for a portion of the contracted cost. Unpaid citations will also be referred through the city's existing collections processes for additional collections efforts. Since the onset of the enforcement program, the city has placed an emphasis on obtaining voluntary compliance, utilizing continued education, advisements and warnings, and citation issuance when necessary. This has been a collaborative effort through the police department, Parks and Recreation Department, other city's departments, and the city's downtown ambassador team, Street Plus, in addition to the efforts of the Willdan staff. Based upon continued feedback received from all of these partners, as well as a decrease in complaints received by the police department, the city's implementation of face covering enforcement has been effective in the effort to gain compliance for most members within the community. Staff recommends council approve an amendment to the existing agreement to increase the total cost of services, and approve a budget amendment in order to fund continued enforcement services through the contracted vendor. If council move forward with this recommendation, it is anticipated that services can extend through May of 2021. With the onset of the vaccine distribution and the circumstances surrounding the pandemic gradually improving, the city remains optimistic that enforcement services may no longer be necessary in the near future. This concludes my report. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Council members, anybody who would like to lead? Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for a very good, very detailed report. Before I get to my questions, I just wanna note that I actually am excited about this program in many ways, because I think this is just an excellent example of utilizing a highly trained civilian workforce to respond to a situation rather than approaching it with armed officers. So I think this is fantastic. But there are some questions for staff regarding the statistics that, they didn't quite make sense to me, so I do have some questions. So first of all, I just wanted to confirm, so in the report, it reflected that about 62% of contacts, and correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong, 62% of contacts took place on San Fernando Boulevard in downtown Burbank, 27% of contacts were in parks, and I believe these are all on the top of page, or middle of page three of the staff report. And then we had 6% of contacts on the Chandler Bike Path, and 4% of contacts in Nag Park. That adds up to about 99% of contacts. So I guess my question is, can you speak a little bit to what enforcement steps are being taken by Willdan, if at all, outside of those four areas?
Yeah, those are the primary areas that we have focused on since the onset of the program. When additional concerns have come up, one that comes to mind is the MetroLink station that was not involved in the initial discussions, but there were ongoing complaints coming in regarding members of the community on the platform not wearing masks. So with the fluidity of the program, we've been able to address problem areas as they come up. So some of those other areas we've deployed to as a one-time issue, or we've added them to the regular rotation based on the need and the concerns that come in on a regular basis as we continually evaluate the program.
Now, follow-up question. In communicating with one of our constituents, I know that one question came up was, how exactly is the determination made on a day-to-day basis? So obviously, you're gonna be patrolling these four areas pretty regularly, but what if there is an establishment, for example, where we're seeing a high volume of people that are not wearing masks? Who makes that determination, and what is the decision-making process?
Yeah, there is a daily debriefing that occurs with police department staff and the Willdan staff to discuss what they've observed in certain areas. So even in the very beginning, they would go to certain parks at certain times of the day, and there would be next to nobody there. So we'd make adjustments to either alter the amount of time that they spent there, the time of day that they went there, and those types of adjustments are made on a regular basis in consultation with the Willdan staff. If issues are brought to our attention in any of those areas, for instance, we had concerns about a large group of bicyclists that were congregating on Sunday afternoons on the Chandler Bike Way. So we altered that to make sure we went out there on those times several weeks in a row to make sure that we addressed that specific group. So we will make adjustments based on incoming concerns that come in, feedback we receive from Parks and Recreation staff, feedback from the Willdan staff about who they see. You know, a lot of the parks, especially, there's the same types of groups that come on a pretty regular basis, so they've become very familiar with those areas, and we're able to literally, on a daily basis, make adjustments as we need to there. Now, since we started the enforcement efforts, they have been focused on those highly populated public areas that we know people go to to engage in recreational activities, or we know there's gonna be a high volume of people. Any concerns that come in regarding a specific location, a private property, or a business, are sent through the other channels to address those as appropriate.
And can you elaborate a little bit more on that? If we're talking about concerns that are raised at a private property, for example, those are not addressed by Willdan staff, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. We have not deployed any Willdan staff to address anything on private property.
So are BPD officers ticketing people for not wearing masks at all?
The Burbank Police Department has not issued any citations. The issuance of citations has been primarily responsibility of the Willdan staff.
So if there, so if there is someone not wearing a mask that's outside of the service areas provided by Willdan, then theoretically, there's no enforcement. I mean, am I missing something?
No, that is correct. We have not been deploying, the Willdan staff are not on a deployment model, so they're on a rotation to address areas that we have identified based on what our evaluation process is. But yes, as ongoing, if somebody is somewhere that's not in that rotation and not wearing a mask, there is not currently enforcement for those areas.
Okay. I have a few more questions, but I'm gonna divert our attention back to the staff report, some statistical clarification. So keeping a look, this is actually, for everyone else to follow along, this is at the bottom of page two, where it talks about enforcement activities. Now, I'm gonna use the data that you provided today, which is a little more up to date. If I wrote all this down correctly, you said there were 6,723 contacts as of yesterday, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And that resulted in 6,043 warnings, and this is where I was going with my question. So you mentioned that there were 517 individuals who are identified as refused to cooperate, and if I got the number right, there were 173 administrative citations that were issued. So my question is, what accounts for that difference? What about the 350-plus individuals who refused to cooperate but were not issued administrative citations? What happened in those circumstances?
Yeah, and the way the enforcement process works, so if Willdan observes someone not wearing a mask, they will approach that individual. If the individual has a mask, and most, 90%, the ones that we say were a contact where you get a warning, was someone who actually has a face covering pulled down around their neck, they may have in their pocket, somewhere on their person, and they're willing to put that on. So we consider that someone that we noticed to be out of compliance, we intervene in order to seek compliance, and that compliance was obtained with them placing and then wearing the face mask accordingly. So that individual is then, you know, notified of the requirements within Burbank, and given a warning that they could be issued a citation should they be caught in the community without that. We have 517 refusals, which is the 8%, it was 517, 17 are individuals who just flat out would not speak with the Willdan staff, walked away, and in that instance, you know, the Willdan staff are not engaging in a confrontation with individuals, that person just refused to provide any information, and it's gone on about their day. We have 163 citations that were issued, so those were actually individuals who weren't not wearing a mask, refused to cooperate with placement of a mask on, and was cooperative with the Willdan staff to provide information, and therefore the subsequent issuance of citation. Is that your question?
Yes, and just to make sure that I'm tracking, so if somebody is not wearing a mask and is refusing to cooperate but does not provide any sort of personal identifying information, they're not issued a citation?
That is correct.
Okay. One final topic, and then I promise to give up the floor to my colleagues, who I'm sure have many questions of their own. This has to do with the status of the citations, and this is, again, the middle of page three, right beneath the chart that's titled City of Burbank Face Covering and Enforcement Activities by Week. So when we're talking about the citations, I saw, I'm just gonna use the data that was in the report, because it's in front of me. So it says, of the 163 citations that were issued, a monetary fine payment had been received on 19, and 13 appeals had been submitted. So with regards to the remaining citations, are these citations that are, they're unpaid? I mean, are there any collection efforts on those citations?
Yes, the remaining right now are currently unpaid. So what will happen is those individuals have three days to make payment or file their appeal. If they refuse, or fail to do so, we will issue a letter to them, reminding them that they are required to make the payment accordingly. At that point, if they're out of compliance, we'll refer it through the city's existing collections processes for unpaid debt. The city has a collection specialist with our financial services who then initiates a... additional collections efforts, and should those efforts go, you know, unwarranted, that person then makes a determination if that should be referred to a collection agency that is contracted with the city.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I did misspeak. One more very quick question for staff.
You have the floor.
Just to confirm, I'm seeing this correctly. So it says that 20% of the individuals who were issued citations were residents of Burbank, but if I'm reading that correctly, the inference is that 80% of people issued citations do not reside in Burbank, they're not Burbank residents?
Yes, that is correct. There were 130 that were issued to people that reside outside of the city. A large number of those were Glendale residents, North Hollywood, and from other cities within the valley. There were also some that were from other areas in the greater Los Angeles region, and we had some that were actually from out-of-state residents.
Okay. Well, I'll have more comments later, but thank you to staff. Really appreciate the answers to my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council members, any other? Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
Thank you very much for the report. Great job. So why, the reasons for appeals, what are those?
Primarily, the reasons have been that they either state that they did not, they forgot their mask, or they lost it, they left the house with it and they lost it, or they were unaware of the requirements to wear a mask.
But if they would have, I know that Wildan has masks with them, so they, did they just refuse to take one?
Yes, the individuals that have been cited have absolutely refused to comply with the face covering requirements.
Ah, okay. So, thank you, the appeals don't seem real like they'll make it through if they were offered a mask, but they refused it. But anyway, and I think, and we had one communication, and the person was concerned, and Councilmember Schultz brought this up too. You know, private business and Tin Horn Flats, and there were, you know, was a restaurant full of people without masks. And the question was how we handled that.
I'd be happy to answer that if you'd like.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam?
Members of council, staff and public, so we all have talked a lot in the past about Tin Horn Flats, have seen a lot about it. The way it was handled was originally through our normal process of code enforcement goes out, discusses issues with them, or they contact the owners, discuss issues. We also had members of our police department that had been out there and talked with them. Once, the issue wasn't just people not wearing masks, because actually, their servers and everything, from our understanding, were wearing masks, was people in, just like if they had been outside on a patio, maybe not wearing masks because they were eating or whatever. There were much bigger issues there, and as the council is very much aware, the public, county public health has taken actions against them. We know that ABC, Alcohol Beverage Control, went out there, and then the council themselves directed staff to initiate modification, suspension, or revocation of their conditional use permit to have their restaurant, and that is in process. So that particular location took a very different avenue. If there are, and I think, I just want to reiterate, if there's complaints about a private business, we do go through our whole process. It does go to code compliance, they do speak to the business, it can then go to police. And I know that there's been occasions where if somebody has refused to leave a premises because they refused to take off to put a mask on, that our police have actually responded to those types of calls in the past. I didn't want it to sound like we never, ever respond, but they're dealing with the person at that point who refuses to leave a business after they've been told that they should, and they're there to, you know, put it, to assist that business owner in bringing into compliance, actually. So the person leaves, and that's the end of it. But that has been our enforcement aim. So what you're talking about tonight has been Wildan and was always brought in with the idea of enforcing the order that the city itself adopted that really went to public places, even though it does speak about other things, but the main focus had been on our public areas. So thank you for letting me answer that one.
Okay, I just have a follow-up question then. So the protocol is different for private businesses, is that right? Is that because it has to be different, like legally? I guess my question is, can we ticket people in a private business?
We, I can go back and look at the order. We may be able to do that, but there's other means to bring people into compliance. And so we really do rely on our private businesses to do that, and some of them are very, very successful at that. We have not, I haven't seen, the police department can jump in, or anyone else for that matter from the staff. I haven't seen complaints about private businesses, except the one that you specifically just spoke about, and we talked about the remedies and what we're pursuing with that one.
Thank you.
Any other council member want to? Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Padgett. So I had a whole series of questions that already got answered, asked and answered, but I feel like another can of worms has just opened up in front of me. I want to ask you if you know about our no-smoking ordinance downtown on San Fernando, and what happens if someone is caught smoking and they simply put the cigarette out or keep smoking and just walk away? Do they get a citation? Does this, is there some sort of enforcement to somebody, you know, breaking a local ordinance and then just refusing to give a name and address? Like, is that precedent? Do we do that with them? What's going on with that? And how does that compare?
Actually, I can't speak, I'm not knowledgeable about that, so I will defer to the city attorney or city manager for assistance on that question.
This is Scott LaChasse. I am not aware of a recent case involving somebody smoking in the area. In the past, when we have had complaints, we have deployed officers to the area to advise people that they were no-smoking areas, and we made sure that there was signage up there. I'm not aware of any instances in the last couple of years where we've been, had to make some type of enforcement action.
And the reason I ask is, I mean, I wish this wasn't on a public forum, but we've basically broadcast to the entire city, if you don't want a citation, just walk away from the person writing the ticket. That's out of the bag now. I mean, that cat's running around and it's yowling all over the place. What are we supposed to do now? Because we've basically pulled the rug out from Wildan to do anything.
Well, I'm asking, what do we do then? We've got very few tools in the toolbag in order to take action and follow up on that type of an activity. If it's an exacerbated case, we, the police department, as well as Wildan, has body-worn cameras on. And what we're capable of doing in an aggravated case is taking that footage and a report to the city attorney's office for a filing. But what we're not going to do is force a confrontation that's going to result in the use of force over an administrative citation.
Yeah, I don't want an altercation, I don't want anyone tackled like this, but like, is Wildan allowed to follow them to their car or go into the business that they just walked out of and say, hey, who was that?
I just explained that Wildan, as well as the police department, we furnished Wildan with body-worn cameras so they know how to use them, and they are capable of recording some type of an instance where there's a refusal. And then based on that footage and based on a written report, we can take that to the city attorney's office for a filing.
Okay, and after that, the city attorney's office can do an investigation? Like, is that, has that happened?
We will do the investigation and submit it to the city attorney for a filing or some type of other activity. But what we don't do is escalate the situation. The whole narrative today is about de-escalation.
Right, no, I know, I know.
We want willing compliance, but the workaround to that is if we haven't had aggravated circumstance, is for us to take that footage to the city attorney's office with a report. We have not had to do that.
Okay, and I think my concern is not in that moment, like, what is Wildan doing or what are the officers doing? But how, what happens in those next steps? Have we done any of these investigations yet? Has there been any, have we taken these body cams?
If we've had exacerbated cases like that, no.
Okay.
Councilmember Springer, actually, Councilmember Telemontes, would you like to go before Councilmember Springer? You haven't had a time.
Real quick, I'm going to make mine real quick. In regards to some of the resources that we're doing here, $100,000 for three months, and I just did some simple math. I was brought up in the Burbank Unified School District, so I kept it simple. 1,500 hours approximately to use up that. So I don't have a breakdown of, I know there's $65 an hour for Wildan, so does that mean that they put in 1,500 hours plus in the last three months, which equates to $500, 500 hours per month, which breaks down over, obviously, what? 500 divided by four, 100 hours a week? Or is there a lot of overtime involved in that? Or, see, I don't have a breakdown in what, other than the 65 dollars per hour to pay Wildan? That's what's costing us, the city, and the $100,000. Is there a separate, Courtney, is there a separate breakdown in regards to what we did for education, what we did for media, what we did?
No, everything with Wildan has been the contracted services to provide enforcement services. So literally, on October 16th, they reported here to the station, we did a debriefing, orientation of the city, and they hit the ground running as far as conducting enforcement activities. So your math is correct, sir. To date, they have worked of 1,509.5 hours at the contracted rate of $65 per hour. So that is approximately $98,117. So in the, we have altered the hours that they've worked based on different weeks, we've adjusted time on holidays and things like that. So we do have the breakdown of total hours worked by week throughout that timeframe. And even right now, we've gone to a little bit of a reduced work schedule, so if council should authorize us to move forward with another $100,000, we believe that would give us services to approximately through the end of May.
So my quick math, like I mentioned, 500 hours per month divided by four weeks is 125 hours per week. So they're providing the city 125 hours a week of service.
Yeah, depending on the week, yes. As it been a set of hours per each week, because we have modified the schedule, like this week, we have them on an 80-hour schedule.
Okay, and the attached report from the park patrol, I don't know, I couldn't find, make any sense of what the relationship was to this agenda item, but thank you for providing that report to us. I served on the Parks and Rec Board for nine years, and so I was familiar with Parks Patrol information that we would get, that the police officers would be doing through the course of their, you know, service throughout the course of their time on the job. But anyway, I appreciate all those comments, and I do share some concerns that my colleagues, Councilmember Schultz and Anthony, are voicing. So thank you very much.
Vice, correction, Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
I mean, actually, one of my questions was just answered, but also, I did have a question from the constituents about the park reports and the purpose for those. On the park reports, does it have, like, stops to address people that weren't properly masked?
No, the park reports are not specific to this enforcement program. They were included kind of as, I believe at the request of one of the council members, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong on that. We were discussing the collaborative efforts that, in addition to the enforcement efforts conducted by Wildan, that police officers are frequently present in parks, and just by their presence, their uniform, the patrol vehicles coming through, that is an effort to, people put their mask on when police officers come around. So I think there was a follow-up question in regards to how many park checks that we do per month, and so the chief requested that we include the reports as an attachment to the staff report.
If I could elaborate, the reason is that there's been a concerted effort to partner with Parks Recreation and Community Services, because as you notice in the attached report, we do get complaints from the parks, some parks more than others, as well as Chandler and the hiking trails. So there has been a concerted effort to gather data from all of patrol activities out there. So this is kind of a force multiplier, having the officers that go to the parks on a routine basis, depending on the types of problems that are being encountered. But then they also have the opportunity, because of COVID, to address the mask issue.
Thank you.
Any other further questions, comments? Councilmember Schultz, you wanted to come back?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You have the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just wanted to thank staff and the chief and our city attorney for answering my questions, and please know that I'm not trying to be pointed in asking these questions, but I think that it's good to understand how successful the program has been, but the opportunities for improvement upon the program. And so my next question would be for staff. I really don't know who would be the best equipped to answer this, but let's say hypothetically, this council wanted to add another area to the city beyond the four we've talked about, right? As another area of focus, if you will. Is that something that we would need to make in the form of a motion tonight? You know, what kind of guidance or direction would you need from this council?
This is Chief LaChasse. I don't believe we would need any guidance. What we're going to do is focus our attention where there are large numbers of complaints and people that are concentrated at one area. So the value of our program now is the fact that we can remain flexible, and as the problems change, we can flex schedules to meet the demands of the new problem areas. So we're going to be flexible, remain flexible, be resilient, and respond wherever in the city we do have significant concentrations of people and complaints.
Mr. City Manager, you have the mic, please.
Yeah, if I could add on, if there are, if it is council direction for us to concentrate on other locations, we're certainly happy to do that. So just let us know now, today. Otherwise, we're going to, like the chief said, we will, if there are other hotspots, we will deploy accordingly. So, but if you do have areas that you'd like us to visit or, you know, more regularly, please let us know now and give us that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I did have a couple more comments.
Please.
So I wanted to emphasize, I think this is a really terrific program in many, many ways. It gives us increased flexibility because we're dealing with a separate staff, as opposed to officers who are working their regular schedules. I also really like the idea that we might be able to seek partial reimbursement for what we're expending on this program through FEMA. I think it's great. And I want to emphasize, I think, something that we all agree with, and that is that we're in this together, and, you know, we don't want to go into another situation where we're shutting down again. And the single best thing that we can all do to prevent that from happening again is by looking out for one another by wearing a mask. So the question on the table is whether to continue this program. I do support it. I think that it has value, I think that it adds security and safety to our city, but what I would like to see, my question for my colleagues, I suppose, and if they agree perhaps for the direction for staff, would be, when we are dealing with, and this doesn't pertain to any particular establishment, but any establishments, where we might have patrons who are on public rights of way, who are not adhering to the mask ordinance, I'd like to know if there, if anyone shares my view, that I'd like to see greater responsiveness and flexibility with dealing with those situations, because I don't want to give the perception that we're only looking at these four areas, and I don't mean to put words in staff's mouth or suggest that that's anything that you've said. I just really believe that we need to deploy Wildan across the city, depending on the changing needs that we're encountering every single day.
Any council member like to weigh in? Councilmember Anthony?
I, I'm okay moving on to deliberation at this point, but I just wanted to apologize to the chief and Ms. Padgett, I got a little heated a few minutes ago. You know, I know you guys are doing the best you can, we're all trying to do the best we can, this is a very touchy subject, so, you know, please accept my apology, and I hope we can just get something going and try to keep people safe, and, you know, it's really stressful. So thank you for the report and everything.
Councilmember Springer? Councilmember Springer?
So with respect to Councilmember Schultz's comment, is that what, Wildan is agile, right? So they can be deployed to, say, there's something going on, like on Burbank Boulevard. You would contact them and they would, you would deploy them there? Or they would be contacted, right? To the hotspot at that point in time?
Yeah, I mean, Wildan has been extremely, a really great vendor for us to work with. They have been agile as far as scheduling and location adjustments that we have made on a regular basis. We have not implemented a regular deployment, you know, model like you speak of, where, you know, we get a call and we turn around and we dispatch Wildan staff there. The staff do have radio, department-issued radios, so we are in constant communication with them. So I think we could evaluate those situations and the needs as they arise and work with the vendor to see if we can make sure those areas are addressed.
You have the mic, Courtney. One of the words of the year is science. And there is a bit of science-injectedness because we conduct a debrief every day. And what we do is try to identify where we're going to deploy those resources the next day. So that's based on observations made by the police department, by Wildan, as well as information that comes in from the public. So there is a concerted effort to make sure that we put the personnel resources in the areas where there are the problems or where we do receive complaints.
Okay, council members, I will, oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, chief, now, there's been a highly-publicized location in Burbank. Were there any citations given by Wildan or our PD in regards to? Because I know I went by there one night. I just happened to be going by there. At least 20 to 30 people outside. So are there any, have there been any citations or anything done by us in regards to that location?
I believe there was a previous response that that venue is subject to another type of action that's taking place and that you're a part of. If a complaint comes out about a congregation of people, we have not received that information here. You, I think, made an observation at one time. And when you were coming back from Bob's Big Boy, you sent an email. That was the first bit of information we got. So by the time we got the information, it was stale and there was nothing there. So what we tell our folks to do is to be vigilant as they're going by, to make observations, to determine if there is a reason for us to take action. That has not been a common complaint, to my knowledge whatsoever. And what we do is, I have the captain of support services that judiciously looks at public complaints that come into the communication center about the venue that you're speaking of. So, and again, the amount of complaints that have come in over the last several weeks have been in single digits, if even that.
Well, chief, to be very honest with you, what I've been getting from some of the residents in Burbank is that I don't bother to call because the police department or anybody's not going to do anything about it. That's what I've been, the responses that I've been getting.
Well, you know, that's not true. I'll tell you, the reason we were there in the first place is because of the neighbors that are but that area who were very vigilant in complaining. And again, we haven't received those complaints whatsoever.
All right, thank you, chief.
I'll go next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If council members are done, I'll weigh in and then I'll call for somebody to make the motion. Mr. City Manager, being tough on agenda, I'm going to weigh in where Vice Mayor Telemontes left off. I know I personally have submitted double-digit emails of residents complaining to me of this location. And I've sent it to the assistant city manager and I've sent them to Patrick Prescott. So for them to not communicate with the chief, according to what I just heard the chief say, that he has not received those emails, I guess, again, being tough on agenda, Mr. City Manager, to me, that's bad. Because I have personally sent double-digit emails. And for the chief not to know that, there's a breakdown somewhere. So I have to agree with the vice mayor, sir.
And I don't know if you're referring to specific mask-wearing issues or related to them not following the health order as far as operating outdoor dining.
It's both, sir. If you read those emails carefully, sir, again, on tough on agenda, it clearly states, "By the residence across the city to do something about that location," whether it's the restaurant or it's people outside. So I know what Councilmember Telemontes is reporting out because I know I have sent double-digit emails. So there is a breakdown there. I want it to be fixed, sir. Because the council, five of us, have agreed something has to be done. But residents, our residents have reached out to us council members. So there's a breakdown there somewhere, sir. Please look into it. Thank you. Councilmember Anthony?
I wanted to just point, ask one question then point something out. The body cameras that Wildan is wearing, do they tell the people that they're talking to that they're wearing body cameras and that they're being recorded?
They are clearly visible. They wear them right here in the middle of their chest. So they're very clearly visible when they walk up to individuals that they are being recorded.
Okay, but they don't say? They don't, it's not part of their spiel to announce that?
I don't believe so, but I can double-check on that and clarify that for you.
No, it's.
Okay. Okay, the reason I ask, if you, you know, if you buy a fast pass for the freeway and you pay a fee for the toll, it's a set rate. But if you drive in the carpool lane without a fast pass, they don't track your license plate and charge you the same fee you normally would pay. The process of tracking you down increases the fee. So we have the ability to use, you know, their face, their recording, facial recognition software, whatever it is to do, to investigate. And there's no reason why we can't tack on those man-hours as labor onto the fee and tell people this. So that when we approach, is there a way we can have Wildan explain to them? Hey, we can record you. Don't walk away. Because we, a city council, can ask, hey, why don't we increase fees on people who do walk away? And lower that threshold, you know, not to say it's a more, a worse instigation or incident, but rather the hassle of having to track people down. I think that's a completely reasonable thing to tack on to these fees. I don't want to charge people exorbitant amount of money if they're right there and they refuse one, so we give them a small citation. But the repeat offenders, people who continuously do this, people who run away, refuse to talk, refuse to comply, there has to be some sort of escalating fine. That's just where I'm at, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, did you want to weigh in on this, ma'am? You have the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If the council wants to look at doing something like that, then you need to direct us and we would need to come back with. That's not provided in our ordinance now. It's not part of the administrative citation process. And that's something we would have to look into doing. So it's not just, oh, you can go do that. That's not how it is. But if the council's direction is to do that, then we can look at bringing back an ordinance to change what currently is allowed. So typically, though, our fines, if someone is fined more than once, there is an escalation. But there's not normally, and I'd have to, well, if you ask us to do it, we will do the legal research. We will look at how we can change the ordinance. Because normally, we don't charge people for our investigative cost. But there is escalation if people do something more than once.
One second, Councilmember Springer. Councilmember Anthony, are you finished with your thoughts and comments? Thank you, sir. Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
Are there many repeat offenders?
Right now, we've had one individual that we know of that has been cited twice. But Wildan has not, now, there may be instances where a different enforcement officer may encounter the same person. But these staff have become very, very familiar with the areas within the city. And they have not vocalized seeing a constant repeat offender within any of the areas within the city.
Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Followed by Vice Mayor. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, okay. Staff referenced, you know, if we had ideas for further direction to bring them up. So I'd like to make three suggestions that I'd like to present to my colleagues and perhaps we can reach a consensus. Based upon the feedback that I have received from constituents, and I know we all have, I would like to see increased focus on the span of Magnolial. I would like to see increased focus at the intersection of Victory and Magnolia. And I'd also like staff to look into options for same-day reporting. You know, what I would like to see is if there's a way, whether it's a hotline number, direct email submission, if somebody's seeing something, if they are doing what we're asking them to do and being vigilant in the neighborhood. I don't want them, if at all possible, to have to go through their council member's office. They should be able to get right in touch. And so I think that that's something that perhaps we could work on doing. And I'd love to know if my colleagues agree or disagree with me on those suggestions.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. Vice Mayor, you have the mic.
Very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Schultz, I'm in full agreement with your suggestions. Now, Ms. Paget, do you know how many hours of recordings do we have? Or how many recordings we have?
You know, I don't know. We can get that number for you. We didn't assign the body-warn cameras for probably about two weeks after we started the program. We realized that it'd be a good idea to, you know, have them memorialize the contacts while conducting face-cover enforcement. So they have had assigned body-warn cameras and we can go within the Axon system and see how many hours of footage has been downloaded.
That would be interesting to, that would be good information to know. So you're not familiar whether they've been told to record every encounter? Or that's part of their?
No, they have been told to record all of their encounters while conducting face-covering enforcement.
Oh, so we should have a lot of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic, sir.
I am in agreement with Mr. Schultz's suggestions as well. I want to ask my fellow council members if we would like to see the city attorney come back with some language about a punitive fine for having to investigate. I mean, I know it's going to be rare. I don't think there's going to be, you know, more than double digits of kind of people that would, you know, refuse to comply. But, you know, just having that available as a warning, I think, would help. I don't know, what do you feel about that?
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Schultz. I mean, Councilmember Schultz.
This may actually, I may need to rope in the city attorney on this. But if we were going to make a change to the administrative citation process, wouldn't that need to perhaps be a new agenda item that we bring up at the end of the meeting?
Since this, I mean, it is outside of this, but you're giving a lot of information. I would ask, yes, I mean, we can do it now, or the, sorry. Councilmember Anthony could bring it up. We do allow people to say, I'd like this to come back. I'd like to see this. We are on, the topic is the amendments to, like, what do we want to do? You know, continue? But I don't think it goes, if you're asking us to come back with information, you can't. I would prefer that you're asking for us to come back with information. And if the council majority wanted to do something, then you could give us that direction. You know, so it would be a new agenda item. And all I can say is, it's not something that can be done overnight. So I want that very, very clear that it's, you know, there's not, if it's a one step, it's a one step. And that may be the best way to do it. So that we can bring back a certain amount of information and the council can give us direction.
Councilmember Springer?
Do the fees escalate now? I mean, we've had one person who got a second ticket. And so what was the initial ticket and what was the second ticket?
The initial ticket is $100 and the second is $200.
Any further questions, Madam Springer?
No, that's, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let the city attorney know that this is urgent. We have to treat this with urgency. I mean, because, you know, we've been into it 11 months. We've been educating for 11 months. And people are still not adhering to the safety. And that's my concern. The biggest safety concern is for you and myself. I want all the residents to be protected and I want the person himself or herself to be protected as well. I mean, it's, anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So this, we have council members. I believe, Mr. City Manager, this is on a time. The physical agenda item in front of us, the staff report, this is timed, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if we don't act on it now, we will not have a Wildan for, you know, until you decide to reconsider it. So we would recommend making a decision related to their agreement tonight.
So council members, on this topic only, I'd like to see if there's a council member interested in a motion on the report in front of us. And in a second, and once we get done voting with that, just because we're already on the topic, I'll give the mic to Councilmember Anthony and you can make your motion. Is that okay with everybody and what we're going to do? Great, so somebody who'd like to call the motion? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I do, with putting aside the administrative citation process, I put forward three suggestions. I thank you everyone for expressing agreement with it. Before I make my motion, I just wanted to ask if anyone else had any other recommendations or amendments to make. I don't want to foreclose discussion before I make my motion. But if I don't see any hands.
Councilmember Springer, go ahead.
Can you just please repeat the locations?
Absolutely, thank you, Councilmember Springer. I was suggesting the span of Magnolia between Blena Vista and Hollywood. Second, we would be looking at the area surrounding the intersection of Victory and Magnolia. And the third suggestion was for staff to develop and implement some sort of same-day reporting process where if someone is in the community and sees a violation happen and they can communicate directly, the way I envision it, either with BPD or Wildan staff or however city staff believes would be most efficient. I trust their judgment in that regard.
Go ahead, Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
Okay, so these additional, these additional locations would be within the scope of this? The Wildan would just be deployed to those locations when they're needed?
Yes, my, these would be part of their focus areas, if you will, including the downtown San Fernando Boulevard, the city parks, all of that.
Okay.
So, yeah, unless anyone has another amendment they'd like to make, I'm perfectly fine to make the motion.
Okay, we have the motion.
I just have a point of clarification, please, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, you have the mic, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Chief, or Ms. Paget, Wildan people have their vehicles that they travel in?
Yes, we've had one team, we've had kind of two teams we've worked with at different times throughout the enforcement process. And one of the teams has a vehicle. And so that team has been utilized in a roving capacity. Again, not in an deployment model, but in a roving capacity where we've assigned, you know, we want you to hit these parks. We want you to go to Chandler during this timeframe. We want you to come back to the downtown area. So we do have one team with an assigned vehicle. If we wanted to explore options with another vehicle, that would be, you know, a discussion we'd have to have with the vendor.
I just, I'm just wondering, as long as we're expanding their, you know, their oversight of the city, why don't we just say the entire city? I mean, they just can roam around the city and take a look to see what, you know, because like the chief just mentioned, when I witnessed, what I witnessed, coming back from Bob's Big Boy, and by the time I sent the email and the chief got it and the response was, nobody was there because it was too late. So when you say a hotspot, a hotspot could be in the next two hours and then gone for the next three weeks. So, you know, it just kind of doesn't make sense to me that you're saying, you're going to identify a hotspot for tomorrow? And then the day after, or the day after? So why don't we just say, have them go throughout the city? I don't know if that makes sense. Chief, you tell me if I'm wrong. But, I mean, as long as we're widening their scope of duty, why don't we just tell them the whole entire city?
Well, I think what we want to do is engage in targeted enforcement where the problems are. We can, but again, I think what we need to do before we make decisions is to gather facts. So what we need to do is meet with the totality of the Wildan force out there as well as our people to coordinate that effort and see what recommendations come in. But what we want to do is just to engage in patrol without it being somehow, you know, could be not a good reason to engage. could be not a good reason to engage in that type of undirected patrol. What we're doing is looking to see where we can have the greatest impact on the greatest number of individuals to correct the problem. So, you know, what we will do is sit down and meet with our counterparts. And I suspect we're coming back to council, and we can report back.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, man.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz, go ahead and make your motion.
I will. And just briefly, in response to Vice Mayor Talamontes, my intent, my recommendation to council, to staff if council agrees, is that I would like to see their purview be the entire city. I do think it makes sense, of course, to have areas of prioritization. But I don't think that there should be ever a situation where Weldon is saying, "We don't do that. We don't go there." So I'm 110% with you. So, Madam City Attorney, if I need to repeat any of the recommendations, let me know. But with those recommendations in mind, my motion is as follows. Number one, to approve an amendment to the agreement with Weldon Engineering for the enforcement of face-covering requirements within the city, adding $100,000 to the cost of services to provide enforcement services through May 2021 as needed. And additionally, to amend the fiscal year 2020/2021 budget by appropriating $100,000 from the general fund revenue account number... Do you need me to read the revenue account number?
No.
No.
Okay. To the expenditure account number provided and set forth on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Finn, I just...
Stand by for the second. Madam City Attorney?
I would just say that, and this includes the... That your priority, I'm going to use that word, locations of Magnolia between BV and Hollywood, Magnolia and Victory, and seeing if there's some kind of real-time same-day reporting that can be instituted.
Maker of the motion, Councilmember Schultz? Yes?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay. Now, who wants to second it? Vice Mayor Talamontes? Before we vote, Councilmember Springer, did you have a question or a comment before we vote? Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may I ask you to do the roll call?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes. Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic to do your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like I'm apologizing all night tonight. Madam City Attorney, I did not start this meeting wanting an ordinance to come back, but after hearing the report, I want... I move that we, if it's possible, to take a first step and come back as soon as possible. This is an emergency. I know your team is already burdened with a lot of stuff on your plate. If there's any way you could move this up and move it fast, please come back with an amendment to our current agreement with the... With Will Dan, to see if there's a way we can create an escalating enforcement mechanism, especially with regards to folks who refuse not only to wear the mask, but to give information and comply with the enforcement officers.
Mr. City Manager and City Attorney, did we get the motion, or...
It's just a request to bring a first step, and yes, we got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Is there a second on the motion?
There doesn't... It's just like any other agenda item that's being brought back.
Okay, perfect. Then, moving on to the next item. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Our next report for consideration to cap third-party food delivery service in the city of Burbank. I would like to invite Building Administrator Manager Carol Ann Coats.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If it's all right with you, this is Agenda Item Four, correct?
Yes.
I have previous dealings with Uber Incorporated. If it's all right, I will recuse myself from this discussion.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, have we met the requirements under the new law for conflict of interest reporting out?
Yes, because Mr. Councilmember Anthony, I believe, is removing himself based on his any perception of bias or conflict of interest because of his prior dealings with Uber.
Thank you. Would Building Administrator Manager Carol Ann Coats, please present the report to the council? Good evening, ma'am, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city councils. This is Carol Ann Coats from Building Safety Division of the Community Development Department. And tonight, this is a first-step report requested by Councilmember Schultz on third-party food delivery service fees. The city currently does not limit fees charged by food delivery services. Delivery businesses, excuse me, such as Uber Eats, Postmates, Grubhub, and DoorDash proliferated during LA County Safer at Home for control of COVID-19 order. These companies pick up orders from restaurants and deliver them to the customer, charging restaurants a fee on the purchase price of the order, which is typically 30%, but combined with other service fees could be as high as 40%. To help restaurants during the Safer at Home order, some cities, including Glendale, Los Angeles, and Santa Monica, adopted urgency ordinances that capped that fee. The city of Santa Monica in May 2020 capped delivery fees to 15% of the purchase price of the order and limited other fees to 5% for a total commission of 20%. The other fees charged by third-party delivery services are for such things as advertising or arranging the takeout or delivery order. Most cities with an ordinance adopted this fee structure. Although the cap was designed to assist restaurants, some restaurants in Los Angeles were not in favor of adopting an ordinance out of concern that it could have unintended consequences or impact their business. The main issue reported by some restaurants in other cities is that the delivery services largely ignore the ordinances. Also, after the city of Chicago adopted a delivery cap, the delivery service added an additional fee to the end consumer. Enforcement would be the biggest challenge of a potential ordinance, and the main fiscal impact would also be enforcement. The city has approximately 400 restaurants of different sizes and not enough staffing to respond to potential complaints from this number of businesses. Current staff resources and code enforcement and the city attorney's office are not allocated or budgeted to absorb the anticipated additional enforcement. However, enforcement does not need to be solely provided by the city. Another approach to enforcement empowers restaurants overcharged by a delivery service to take their own action. Santa Monica gave restaurants the power to issue a notice to the delivery service requesting a refund of the overcharge within seven days. If the delivery service does not comply or continues to charge fees in violation of the ordinance, a restaurant may take civil action, including small claims court. In conclusion, third-party food delivery services charge restaurants a delivery fee of up to 30% plus service fees that could bring the total up to 40%. Capping these fees through an urgency ordinance is a method adopted by some cities during the pandemic to provide assistance to restaurants that are struggling. Staff recommend city council determine whether or not to proceed with an urgency ordinance, and if so, provide direction to staff to return to city council with an urgency ordinance capping delivery fees. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
I'd like to turn the mic over to Councilmember Schultz. This was your agenda. You can lead the conversation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, thank you very much for the staff report, Ms. Coats, and for a good presentation tonight. Really appreciate the background information. Just to begin, can you speak a little bit more to the enforcement method that the city of Santa Monica does employ? For example, how that might work, step by step?
So the enforcement method would be that the restaurant itself would send a letter to the delivery service informing them that they are charging fees that are in excess of what is allowed by the city ordinance. And the delivery service responds, and then they negotiate that between the delivery service and the restaurant.
Thank you very much. And correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Councilmember Schultz, if I could just sort of add to that, because you did ask us to go through step to step. So if a refused... If a delivery service refused to adhere, they could bring a small claims court action for the difference in the money that was charged. If it's $10,000 or less, they can go to small claims court action. If it's more money, then they could go possibly... And small claims, the whole idea behind is that you can do it yourself. You don't need attorneys, and attorneys aren't supposed to actually be in small claims court. And then if it's an amount that's maybe higher but lesser than $50,000, then you can bring a simple civil action, and there is a thing called limited civil liability. So it's not a huge expense to do it. That is another way. I would like to say also that some of this... There was, I believe, a lot of confusion in the beginning, and even when Santa Monica first did this with compliance, there has been so many of these done now, I don't know if all the same problems still exist, possibly when you first instituted. But there has been, you know, a great deal of them now done across the country. So I think the delivery companies are somewhat used to it.
Thank you very much. In addition, my next question for staff is, if I read the report correctly, did your research reveal that the fee being charged to restaurants could range from 30% to 40%? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, so many restaurants... Many delivery services are charging 30%, and then they sometimes charge other fees for advertising because the delivery services do advertise the restaurants on their websites. And then there's other fees that they might be charging to, I guess, arrange the pickup order or handle the pickup order. And so the fee that could start out at 20% or 30% then becomes 40% quite easily.
So just to make sure I'm tracking, if I were to order hypothetically a $20 meal from a local Burbank restaurant, and they were charged a 30... So just to clarify, they're charged 30% to 40% on the total sale price, right?
Right, on the purchase price of the order.
So in that example, the restaurant... So if I have a $20 purchase, they could be paying $6 to $8, whether it's 30% to 40% as that part of that delivery fee. That's not money that's going into the pocket of our local restaurateurs. Am I describing that correctly?
Correct. Yeah, the restaurant would pay that to the delivery service, or the delivery service would take that out of the cost of food. And then you, as an end user, might not even realize that that's happening.
Thank you. I just have two more questions, and then, look, I have requested this item. I do intend to make a motion later, and I really want to give my colleagues the chance to ask questions. But I have two quick ones. In your research, with regards to any other ordinances that other cities have implemented, have they taken any protections with regards to tips and how those go to the restaurants or employees there?
The restaurants that I researched were mainly focused on... The ordinance I researched were focused on just the delivery fee charged by the third-party service and not so much affecting those other fees. Although it is a concern that we could research.
Okay.
Is it how that all interacts and how reducing the fees affects the other fees?
If I may interject also, if the council, doing as straightforward as presented here as originally brought a delivery, capping that is... It is fairly straightforward at this point on how to bring back an ordinance. I believe where it gets much more confusing is when moving layers away from that and trying to do more. I believe some of the issues that I've seen, not how it was solved, but issues, was more about the tips going to drivers and how sometimes in response to a city enacting one of these caps, the delivery service reconstructs, so to speak, their bills and the invoices and what it looks like to the end users that could affect what's happening to the drivers. So, you know, it gets very... That becomes much more complicated because it has to do with how that delivery service is effectuating the change that's brought about because of what the cap is and trying to recoup. So you can see changes to the end users because there's a new fee that they put on to the consumer that's purchasing, as well as the restructuring of the invoice, the delivery cost to the consumer that sometimes the... There was a complaint about how tips were being handled. So that gets much more complicated. I'm just saying, in terms of what that is, and what I've read was, it was in response to that restructuring of how they... Where the delivery company is trying to make up some of the loss of that income as they see it.
Thank you very much. My final question, and I'll cede the floor. Based upon my research, and then I want to ask if that's consistent with what you found or if you have anything to add. But we had a caller earlier, Ms. Besson, who mentioned that this was not, in her words, not a very revolutionary idea. And from what I've been able to tell, the city of Los Angeles, the city of Glendale, the city of Anabello, the city of West Hollywood, the city of Santa Monica, and unincorporated Los Angeles all have implemented similar measures. Is that consistent with what you researched? Are there any other Southern California cities that you have found have enacted a similar ordinance?
That's... The town of Pacific Grove passed such an ordinance. In addition to the ones you've mentioned, you know, they're even out of state, New York, Washington, San Francisco, and San Jose. So there... It is increasing. The ordinances are catching on.
Thank you very much for your time. I'll cede the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Springer, would you like to have the mic?
I'll go ahead. You know, I would like to know what the impact on the restaurants and the drivers of these caps have been. Does the 30% or 40%, does that include the delivery fee?
So the delivery fee that the restaurant... Hey, so that is one concern. The delivery fee... There's a fee that the delivery service charges the restaurant. And when you add up those fees together, they could... That's what totals the 30% or 40%. And also, the end user is... You'll see when you order is also charged a delivery fee. And there is a concern which some other restaurants have brought up, and we would have to do a little more research on this, that how that... If you reduce, you know, you cap the fee to the delivery service and what they can charge, and does that somehow... That lessening of fees, does the deliveries... The third-party company, do they take that from the wages or the earnings of the drivers?
Right.
That is one concern that some restaurants have mentioned, and that's why in Los Angeles, for example, they had a petition that they weren't in favor of the ordinance. I was concerned for what could happen.
So if I may as well, there's been a lot of... If you look online and read some articles, there's a lot of anecdotal issues. I don't know how much of it is empirical at this point. So in Jersey City... And, you know, sometimes we're talking about much larger cities, right? So the consequences are much larger to those delivery services. When you talk about the amount of restaurants in the city of Los Angeles versus the city of Burbank, you can just imagine. So what happened in Jersey City is that the... I don't want to say which company, because I may have the wrong one. But one of the companies, and it was the largest one in that area, and it's one of the national ones, they ended up narrowing the amount of delivery service they offered from that city, and they also put a delivery charge on to the consumer, the end consumer. So the person who's making the order. In Chicago, one of the companies did that as well. These... Both those instances happened when these kind of orders and ordinances were first taking effect. What I'd like to say is what I had said earlier. It seems that they have, the companies, I'm not saying they're just agreeing, but it's become more institutionalized at this point. but it's become more institutionalized at this point, that more and more cities have taken these, have done this. So, but I haven't seen empirical studies per se. I've read more anecdotal in newspapers' accounts of what's happened.
Okay, because I have a friend who drove, I mean, she, a single mom, and she needed to earn some extra money. So she told me she delivered, she made probably over 900 deliveries in one year. And so her fee, I mean, listening to some of the things that she did, I want you all to think about, okay, say for example, she had a $100 order. And if the fee were capped at 20% and she had to deliver, and some of these deliveries were far away. If she had to drive 50 miles round trip to make her delivery, it, it costs her money. She is subsidizing that order for the consumer and for the restaurant. And she cannot afford to do that. She is a single mom. So that's what concerns me is the impact on the restaurant even and the drivers. And you noted that one of the services, and I, I think what they're doing is horrible. But so even the impact on the restaurant, so maybe the restaurant can't send that order down to Long Beach anymore. Maybe they have special barbecue in Burbank, I don't know. But some people have the money to pay that. So a couple things. There's AB 286 that's been proposed in Sacramento. I'm just putting that out there, but somebody's already doing, if, you know, do we want to piecemeal anything, anything? Outdoor dining is now open again. And I asked my friend, who uses, to whom did you deliver these over 900 orders? And she was not delivering to seniors who could not get in their car and go. She was delivering to middle-aged and young people. And so to me, the issue is transparency on the fees that are being charged. We get that in everything else. When we buy something, we get a receipt and it tells what we're paying for and how much. And so I'm concerned about the negative impact to the drivers and to our restaurants who might lose business because of this. Because there are other alternatives. I mean, there are the big ones. And my mother was ill and I wanted to get her ice cream. She was in Texas and I paid more for the delivery than for the ice cream. But it was important for me to do that. I didn't care. It was her birthday and she was sick. So late, late last year, I interviewed several of our businesses in Burbank. And one of them was a little restaurant called Cafe de Oya. I have not been there, I, but they have been very successful. But they told me that they use the app Chow Now. It's get, G E T, get.chownow.com. And it has enabled them to flourish during this pandemic. They just recently opened a business, a new restaurant in Monrovia. They're looking at another location, an additional location in Burbank. And I'm not, I'm just bringing this up because there are alternatives out there. And if we do this, are we going to hurt businesses like Cafe de Oya and this other get.chownow? Because they charge a monthly, they charge a startup fee, they charge a monthly fee, and then they charge delivery. But you can, we want, I want our restaurants to thrive. I want them to succeed and to thrive. And I just glanced at their website today and one of the things that it said was, we can take five orders at one time because you go to their website. Their, their website is there. It's not on a third-party site. And I spoke with Chow Now today and they added 11,000 restaurants last year. And so I feel like we need to be really careful about this. The unintended consequences of hurting, of actually doing harm to our restaurants and to our drivers who are just scraping by. And I also looked at their list of businesses in Burbank who use Chow Now. Waceno, Don Cuco, Martino's, Talirin, Poquito Mas. And there are others. I just put down the most, the ones that I am most familiar with. And so my hope is that this will evolve so that the big delivery services will have to adapt to a model closer to Chow Now because it's not, it's, it's not fair. It doesn't sound fair and it's not, it's not transparent. And this, if you go to their site, you know, they have testimonials there. And so now there is a choice. A restaurant can use another service. They don't have to use these five. And also the people would have to go to a restaurant anyway to eat, to go to dine on the patio or to go dine inside. So would it not just be easier for them to go pick it up? Instead of really manipulating it and, and, and maybe causing damage to our restaurants and the drivers? So my question is, the, where's the, the driver fee in that? And my friend told me certainly her fee would go down. No doubt if, if there were a cap. So she would be subsidizing something that she just cannot afford to do. So I would like to have more detail on what, what's, what's included in that 30% and 40% and how it affects. I, I want to know the impact on those cities that the restaurants there and what, what it has done to their business. Has it allowed them to flourish like it has with Cafe de Oya? Because this, the, the mission of this little company, it's not so little anymore, it's been in business for 10 years now, is that, you know, they want local restaurants to thrive. And that's what I want, whatever it takes. I want them to thrive. And if, if a cap will allow that, then I will, then I will consider it. The mission is to help local restaurants thrive. And I don't think that's the mission of Grubhub and Uber Eats and all of those. But there are choices out there now. My friend told me about another service, Ninja, that she used to deliver to the elderly. The fees were lower. And, and so would the cap hurt Ninja too? So that, that's what I want to know. I want to know the impacts of, of these programs. And I think they're slippery enough to, to take it away from somebody else's compensation, somebody else's well-being. And that really concerns me. And as you all know, I don't have a car. And I asked every Uber driver if they wanted to be an independent contractor or an employee. And 95% wanted to be independent contractors. So I'm just a little concerned that we're not asking the right people about this.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I did some research as well, like my colleague, Councilmember Schultz. And what I found out, I asked the question, is 30% because of the pandemic? Or what, what was the cause pre-pandemic? And I was given the answer, it was 30%. So it's not a matter that they, they, they jacked up the pricing. It's just, I think what it's trying to solve here is the problem that it's too much, it's getting to be too much, especially during these times. So if we can help out the restaurants by capping it, I would maybe, I don't know, I'd like to ask Ms. Coates, through her, thank you very much for your report, by the way.
Thank you.
Through your research, do these cities that have instituted caps, do they have a, a sunset clause to them? Will they reconsider them in a year, six months from now or what have you found?
Most of them have, worrying that the cap is in effect through the end of the pandemic, plus a time period of 30 or 60 days. So they are temporary ordinances.
Okay, so even though Santa Monica, they, they did an emergency order. The city attorney?
Sorry, Mr. Telem, Councilmember Telemontes and Mr. Mayor and Council, the city of Santa Monica actually did it through order. So some cities have done things through orders. Other cities have done urgency ordinances. But they're all in response to the pandemic. So they've been, the ones we've seen have been tied back to that. And the reason there's usually a transition period is, you know, as we've seen, you want to make sure that the emergency and what's been happening, like the restaurants being relegated to just maybe takeout for long periods of time. They were allowed to reopen for very short periods and then back and forth. So it's to put, get us through the whole process. And as the councils are aware, sort of like some of our ordinances, where we've had to keep renewing and renewing, what cities have done is, has, have a sunset. And I did want to agree with you. It appeared that it wasn't as much price gouging as it just made a much bigger impact on restaurants now because so many of them were dependent on just takeout and delivery services for such long periods.
So that's, that's what I'm getting at. It's not the price, like the city attorney just mentioned. It's not the price gouging, it's the fact that through these terrible times, could you work with us and lower the, obviously? And that's what we're trying to do, help our restaurants by talking about possibly instituting a cap. And remind everybody, this is just the first step. I don't know what my colleagues want to wish, or Councilmember Schultz would like to go forward with something else, but once everybody weighs in, we can discuss that further. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I know you've been itching, Councilmember Schultz. You have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I actually, I really wanted to thank Councilmember Springer. Those were excellent questions and I just want to reiterate, those were concerns that I shared before I brought this, before I requested the report and really considered taking this action with council. Who would we be helping and why? And just to give you a little context for why I believe the way forward is to pass an urgency ordinance is just looking at the data. Take DoorDash, for example. In its IPO filing, they reported revenue of $1.9 billion for just the first nine months of 2020. That was up by more than three times for the same period of the year prior. In fact, they reported a profit of $23 million for the first time in their history during the second quarter of 2020. So when I compare that to what I'm seeing from our struggling small businesses, Vice Mayor Telemontes, you're absolutely right. We're not here to point the finger at these companies and say that they're price gouging. The intent is that our small businesses are hurting. And this is something that every other major city in Southern California is doing and frankly, around the country, and I think we can and should do it too. But to your, to your point, Councilmember Springer, because you, you made several excellent, excellent ones. Assembly Bill 286 is being advanced in Sacramento by Assemblyman, Assemblymember Lorena Gonzalez. I always think that the best solutions are homegrown right here in Burbank. So I wouldn't want to delay action hoping that they solve it in Sacramento when we really need a customized solution here for Burbank. Next, to your concerns about protecting the driver, that is something I've given consideration to. What I envision, but this is obviously open for discussion, would be that we could model our order or ordinance based on, for example, the, the city of Denver. There in the city of Denver, they have capped the delivery fee to 15% of the total sale or purchase price. They also have required that all tips that are given go to the delivery driver. There's specific language in their order that ensures a driver's pay can't be reduced because of the reduced delivery fee. There's a requirement that receipts be itemized so that all fees and costs are listed for both the restaurant and the customer to see. I have more that I can elaborate on, but that's the kind of protections that I think we can build into our order here that quite frankly, I trust us to do the job more thoroughly than Sacramento. But I think that these are steps that we absolutely need to take. So that's just my two cents. And I, and I hope it really stimulates some further discussion.
All right, I'll weigh in real quick. I liked the conversation. I, I am concerned about the small businesses. And I did read the report of Denver and how they're protecting, you know, basically the restaurants from gouging through their delivery services. And, you know, we don't know how long we're going to be in this stage. So I'm very committed to do whatever we can as a council to support our small businesses. And the discussion hits a lot of the points that are very dear to me. And in talking to some of our small businesses, they have asked me about this agenda item in preparing for tonight's council meeting. The businesses I spoke to are private mom and pop businesses. They can't keep up with the chains. And they say that they need help. And that would go a long ways to show them our commitment to, you know, be thinking outside the box, be creative thinkers, problem solvers, to help the mom and pop businesses that are struggling. So if somebody would like to put a motion forward, let's see where we go with it. This is your motion, Councilmember Schultz. And then anybody can weigh in as a second. This is still fluid right now, so I'm open for discussion, but give it a shot.
I just have.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is just to move it forward with further investigation because if it's going to.
This is for the second step.
If it's going to hurt our restaurants and hurt our drivers, I don't want to do it. But we're going to find out in the second step, the impact. Is that right?
Madam City Attorney?
The council can ask us to bring back and we will attempt to bring back whatever, you know, information that we can gather. The recommendation was direct staff on whether or not to return with an urgency ordinance. So the second step would be bringing back an ordinance. That's, and so we will try to include as much information as possible. If I may, I did hear Councilmember Schultz putting together a list of things and quoting Denver. So I would like to reiterate, a cap on delivery service fees is easy to do because we have a lot of examples and we understand what the impacts are. As you move to more explicit items, as the council member was talking about, that does take more time. It will take research on our part. We can't just take the city of Denver's ordinance and say, we can adopt it here. Because we're not Denver, we're not the state of Colorado. We have our own issues and I can think of many that could come up already. So the, in giving direction, I would hope that the council would take that into consideration, that you may even want to consider taking this a step at a time. Because as you get into things like receipts, issues that the AB, I'm sorry, I had the.
286.
Yes, thank you. Some of those issues are much more long-term as to what you want to try to help now. So if you are trying to assist your local restaurants right now, I would ask you to consider keeping it simpler for now. Because even for enforcement's sake, it will be easy for us to do. As we start looking into issues with, you know, what happens to tips that they should all go to the drivers? I don't know if that cuts out other people that normally get some of the tips that maybe the people that take the phone orders. I don't know who else that, that affects. So I'm just raising those issues for you that there's, and as I said, some of the impacts have been because of how the, these different platforms structure after a fee goes in. So I'm asking you to take those items into consideration when giving us direction in being able to do something in a timely manner, understanding the council's wish to assist our local restaurants, given the pandemic and what's happening right now. Thank you.
So Councilmember Schultz, think about what our city attorney just said. I can only give you my two cents as one person that's going to vote on this. I'm interested in the urgency of this ordinance. The rest I leave up to you. This is your agenda item, but I wanted to let you know. Vice Mayor, you have the mic, real quick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, when I was reading the report, I was, I was starting to go in. was starting to go in the Santa Monica model. But it appears to me that's putting too much of the burden on the business owner. They've got to go to court, they've got to collect monies, they've got to go to court. And we're trying to help these small businesses from any further burdens. And if we institute another burden that they have to go to court to recoup some of their monies, I'm not going to go there. Now that I'm listening to the Denver, Denver model, I'm more receptive to the Denver model, given what our City Attorney said, but I'm really looking at the Denver model of something that we can implement here in Burbank to really be helpful to our restaurants. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Schultz, based upon everything you've heard, and we want, you know, I leave it up to you, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but it is about an urgency ordinance that's on the agenda item. Let's do it step by step and see where we go, but you have the mic to make the motion.
Well, before I do, Mr. Mayor, I do want to just make a comment that might be of some benefit to Councilmember Springer and Vice Mayor Telamontes. It might help inform the motion. You know, the one thing I want to reiterate is that we have to balance acting urgently, because you're absolutely right. And if we just had a straight 15% cap, we could move that along much quicker. But I don't want to rush legislation or order ordinances that are going to harm or have adverse effects. I do think it's worth taking the time to make sure that it's done right. I suppose my question to staff and perhaps our City Attorney would be, what's the process, if we were to implement, say, an urgency ordinance capping at 15%, I'm not saying this is what I want to do, but if hypothetically we did, what's the process for amending an order or ordinance?
It would be the, if you, so, let me say it this way. If you did it in steps and said, you know, we'd like you to come back with a cap and an urgency ordinance, and we're going to do this first, and then we'd like you to take the time to look at these other issues and bring that back, that's a way you can go. And I do want to say one thing. Even whether, I think the one good thing about Santa Monica, it allows, it specifically calls out and allows the restaurants to help enforce. But anytime we have an ordinance, the city never gives up their right to enforce. So I just want to make that clear. It allows and specifically gives them that ability to send that letter, to question, because we're not always going to know. If we get a lot of complaints about one delivery service, we can absolutely, under either, even the ordinance as, as written by Santa Monica, we always have that ability to enforce our own ordinances. But it's more over, there's 400 restaurants, which, who is going to know what's happening to that? And of course, we would also do, if the council were to go this way, we would have to assist in doing due diligence to get the word out to these delivery services and our restaurants of what the rules of the road are. So some of the bigger issues in some of the bigger cities is when it first happened, for the, these platforms to come into compliance. I don't know that that's as much of an issue. I've already started and reached out to Glendale because they are our neighbor to talk to them more about what they've done, what's happening with them. So, and I think there's things we can learn from our neighbors as well. So if the council, as I said, I think I answered your question. You can do it in steps, you can give us that direction, and if we come back and the council adopts an urgency, you can, we can do that.
Thank you. And one more follow-up question, if I might. Has your research revealed whether any of our neighbors, Glendale, Los Angeles, have, you know, baked in as part of the urgency ordinance, put in place any protections for drivers so that a reduction in the delivery fee can't be passed along to the driver?
I looked at a bunch of them. I cannot recall sitting here today if I did or didn't because I know that I read about what Denver did. I don't know if they have, and I, we will look at it. But Carol Anne, I don't know if you recall in any of the ones you looked at.
They were all pretty much exclusively just caps on the delivery service.
And that's, the ones I did, I haven't seen West Hollywood's or Glendale's yet. But the, and the bigger city ones, maybe because they were done earlier, like back in May and June, did not have all those provisions, from my understanding.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think, Councilmember Springer?
Go ahead, Councilmember Springer.
Excuse me, Ms. Albano, what was your last sentence? You didn't know if they had what?
What I, what I, I'm sorry. What I was saying is, I did look at Los Angeles. I do not recall that they had that. I know that some of the bigger ones, like Chicago, some of the others that were done, the larger cities, only went to the delivery caps. I read recently, someone sent an email about Denver, and I read recently that other people were considering that. I do not know if Glendale or West Hollywood have done that because I have not read their ordinances yet.
And the things that I've read, it's just not clear what that delivery fee includes. And even that's a simple thing that I think we need to know.
So, the delivery, okay. For me, I guess, like, looking at this, there's a delivery, what you're talking about trying to regulate is the fee that the delivery company, that platform, whoever it is, charges the restaurant for making the delivery. Some of the restaurants do, actually will take the orders and then bundle that back up for the, back to the restaurant, and they will do delivery. So they will charge the restaurant without, like, any caps in place, maybe 15 to 20% for the actual delivery service on the gross fee. So I, as Councilmember Schultz did earlier, my, my whole bill comes to $20. They're going to take 20% of that $20. Then, they usually charge restaurants more fees based on their advertising they do, because they're advertising the restaurants on their websites. They cover the cost of, if the, no matter what, that people can go through that platform to actually place their orders. All of those fees can add up to another 10%. So at the end of the day, in unregulated areas where there has been no cap, a restaurant may pay that delivery service 40% of the total bill. So if it's $20, 40% goes to the delivery service. When I make my order, I'm a customer, I'm calling in, I want to order barbecue from wherever it is, I also then pay a fee for that delivery service to me. And then I usually, you know, just like when you take one of, a rideshare, you want to tip the driver. So then there's provisions, there has to be a mechanism to do that as well. So it's, it's very interesting. If you go online, there's a, a website that Uber has called Uber Help that explains how their fees work. It was a page long. It was pretty interesting.
Okay, Councilmember Schultz, if there's no more questions or comments, why don't you take a stab at the motion and see where we go?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would like to do, and I think it's a package deal, more or less, is I'm going to move that staff bring back a proposed ordinance that would cap delivery fees at 15%, but would include the protections we've talked about, including the requirement that a receipt be itemized. That doesn't seem incredibly complicated to me. A requirement that the drivers pay or cannot be reduced as a result of the reduced delivery fee. Those are the things that I would like to see back in a proposed ordinance.
Do I have a second on that one? Vice Mayor Telamontes is seconding it. Madam City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, do we have the motion? Any questions before we take the vote?
I do have one question. Receipt be itemized for who? The receipt to the restaurant or the receipt to the consumer?
Both.
Mr. City Manager, you're good? Okay.
I just have one more question. So, it will move to the next step, and I'm not committed if I don't like it, you know, if I don't feel like the restaurants are protected and the drivers are protected.
Councilmember Springer, this is like any other first step. If there's enough support, it'll give direction to staff. We've asked them through the motion, it will come back, and then we can revisit this again. Once we have, you know, the ordinance in front of us, we can debate it, take stuff out, make recommendations, and take another vote. But this just allows this agenda item to come back to us under the motions guidelines of what we're requesting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Okay, if there's no further discussion, council members, Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Telamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
And Mayor Foudas.
Yes, motion carries to move forward to bring it back. Oh, stand by, Madam City Attorney.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this question. Almost all the ordinances and orders that I've seen, it's a 15% cap on delivery plus 5% cap for other services. Were you including that in this ordinance?
Yes, yes. My intent in making the motion was to mirror what our neighbors are doing, the 15% delivery cap, delivery fee cap. And as I understand it, other fees could not exceed 5%, making the total out-the-door cost 20% and no more than that.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, you did second it. You're okay with, okay, so for members of the audience, this motion moves forward for a second step, noting that there was a conflict of interest with Councilmember Anthony, who recused himself and was off the camera. And Mr. City Manager, if we can get a city staffer to go, perfect, have him log back on, and we can go back to the consent item that was pulled for, for presentation and possible discussion.
Good evening.
Oh, welcome back, Councilmember Anthony.
All right, I'm back.
All right.
Did you get the fun without me?
We missed you. Glad to have you back. Mr. City Manager, if we can have a staffer present the item that we pulled from the consent calendar, annual review of planning developments and development agreements. Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely. I'll have somebody from Community Development. I'm not sure if it's Mr. Ramirez is doing that report, but I'll defer to CDD.
Okay. Mr. Prescott or Mr. Ramirez? You guys have the mic.
Go ahead, Greg. Good evening.
Oh, good evening, sir.
Members of the council. My name is Greg Mirzavakian, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight, you're being presented with the annual plan development and development agreement update. And I do have a brief PowerPoint which, which I would like to share, and I'm going to share my screen to do that. Plan development provides a means for rezoning a property to a PD designation that accommodates unique developments.
Sir, we don't have the screen. We only have you, if there's a PowerPoint for the members of the public.
I'm sorry, I...
We don't have it yet. Now, we do have it, sir.
Okay, great.
Please continue your report. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan development provides a means for rezoning a property to a PD designation that accommodates unique developments that could not otherwise be developed under existing zoning regulation. The development agreement is the implementation and enforcement tool for a PD. It is an agreement between the city and the applicant that vests with the developer the right to build an approved project within the prescribed time period. Staff monitors the progress of development of all the PDs and DAs that have been approved since 1985. Staff monitors the provisions in the development agreement and ensures that the associated conditions of approval are followed, and any mitigation monitoring for the environmental impacts is observed. Future traffic improvements are tied to square footage thresholds identified in the respective DAs. Staff monitors building permits and square footage thresholds as well. So since the PD process was instituted as part of the zoning ordinance, there have been a total of 114 PD applications submitted, and 82 have been approved. Most of these PDs have been completed, and the DA terms have long since expired. Some of the PDs were denied, and others were withdrawn. There are several PDs that were approved but were never built, and their DAs expired. Currently, there are 15 PDs with DAs that are still active. There are also four projects in review at the Planning Department at this time. On this slide, you can see the parcels in the city of Burbank which have currently active PDs and active DAs. In addition, two recently expired PDs are shown. You can also see three completed PDs which are seeing some activity, the Empire Center, Town Center Mall, and the Collection. There are several active PDs which are in active construction phases, including the Second Century Towers at the Burbank Studios, Phases 1 and 2 of First Street Village, and the Avion Project. Construction of 777 Front Street Project is pending at this time. There are four PD/DA projects that are currently in review at the Planning Division on your screen right now. In conclusion, the report and the attachment before you outlines the progress and status of the PD/DA projects in the city. Each year, staff reviews all active PDs and related DAs. Each day requires an annual review, and that is provided in this annual report. This report provides staff an opportunity to identify any potential compliance issues in order to work with developers or property owners to address any concerns. Staff reviewed all 15 active PDs and found that all are either in compliance with the terms of the development agreement or actively working with staff to achieve compliance. Staff is recommending that the city council note and file this report. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Councilmembers, anybody have a question? Oh, Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate you waiting to the end to give it. I knew we haven't heard of this. It's been almost five years since we had this update, and thank you to the City Manager for changing that frequency. I think every year would be nice, that'd be great. There was, there was a wonderful discussion happening at the Planning Board just this week about streamlining these processes. If the city were to create better guidelines, if we were to really outline the design standards and the, you know, with regards to Gold State area and downtown, would it help speed up or even reduce the cost of doing all of these plan developments?
Councilmember Anthony, I want you to stand by for a second. Madam City Attorney?
I was just going to say that it's a very interesting question that you've asked, but this is really about the report on what plan developments we have in place and the development agreements and compliance. I mean, that's really the issue here.
I see.
You're asking a much larger question about...
Let me see if I can narrow that question down then. With regards to compliance, do we see any possible ways moving forward to streamline the compliance issue to get people? I mean, because some of these developments, it looks like it takes years, almost a decade on some of these. Are we looking at those methods, or is this pretty much what we're given, most cities deal with this in the same timeline kind of thing?
Madam City Attorney?
Yeah, so I will, I will defer that question to senior planners or assistant directors who have, have had much more experience with plan developments at the city over the last several years.
So, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please. Please.
So, to your question, Councilmember, ultimately, the projects before you tonight have previously approved agreements between the city and the developer. So, as those projects were granted, timeframes to develop. Some of them are five years, some of them are eight, some could be even longer than that. But during that period, there are conditions of approval that are originally approved by the council when they approve the project. And what we do through this effort is we monitor compliance. So when they decide, like in the case of Second Century, to start building on the Burbank Studios property, they have to do it within the parameters of the conditions of approval. So, that process, as far as the speed of it is... So that process, as far as the speed of it and the timeframe, really is driven by the developer when they submit their information. And then we go through the process of doing what we call condition compliance. So that, that's kind of, that process is pretty much set. What we try to do to make it more efficient is when we do get proposals under these PDs is we actually have team meetings internally with the different departments and we coordinate so that as we're going through and looking at the conditions for compliance, we can determine what, whether the project triggers any mitigation measures like speed improvements or traffic light modifications, those things of the sort. And then also if there are any fees that are required or any public improvements like open space and things of that sort. So that, as far as how that's become more efficient, it's through interdepartmental coordination. And that's something that is replicated even in the new applications that are coming forward. So from that standpoint, that's the improvement to efficiency. The other issue, which I won't delve into because it really is off topic, but there is a process we go through whether it's through for new entitlements and, and that's probably a topic for a different conversation and that's probably what you heard last night. And there's specific times that are looking at those issues.
Okay, yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was, I was asking. You know, people come to me and say, hey, pass an ordinance, pass a law, make these things work. But what you're telling me is it's more about the internal mechanisms of our staff, how we, how we do our internal processes that can really change the timeframe and the scope of this.
Specific to this issue in front of you on the annual reporting, I think you touched on the issue. We're fortunate, council, in, in the last couple of years have made some policy decisions and budget allocations that have increased the staffing level, you know? And I won't get on my horse that, you know, ultimately, we're, we're benefit from the fact that we have more staffing, but of course we also have more work. But as a result of the fact that we now have associate planners like Greg, we now have the opportunity to start making some headway and do annual reports like the one that's before you tonight. And the reason that that's important is that it allows us to track the projects in a more orderly fashion. And when we run into issues, there's issues with ongoing maintenance of conditions that were imposed as part of the DA, having the planning staff available to monitor that on a yearly basis allows us to get in front of it. And unfortunately, we have to own the fact that in the past, since we didn't have the staffing level, you know, we have four years of catching up to do, but Greg has done a great job of basically looking at all 15 PD and DAs and coordinating with staff so that we can reach out to any of them that there might be some compliance issues and start, and continue the work to bring them into performance with their PDs.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Mr. Ramirez.
Councilmember Talamontes, he also brought this up earlier, would you like to have the mic?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I mean Vice Mayor, sorry. Vice Mayor.
Oh, that's okay. It's fine, thank you. You know, and I know the City Manager made, made mention of this early on in regards to this annual review of plan developments, annual being the key word. And I know Mr. Ramirez has explained that a little bit, but it should still be brought back to council. And with, with a caveat that we don't have the staff to provide to them report or whatever the reason might be, instead of just letting it go by, go by, go by, and it becomes out of sight, out of mind until somebody down the road says, well, you know what, we haven't had this report to council for the last five years. So it should be just part of doing business and if you have to say whoever does the report or whoever's in charge of CDD, obviously the director is the final say, that go to council and let them know why we haven't, or why this report is incomplete for lack of a better term. So, you know, it's just, it's gotta come back. It was unfortunate when I was reading that this was five years down the road. And I understand we've been asking staff to do more with less, but we've got to get the business done. I mean, some things have to get done. Because if we don't have, if we don't have developers coming in the door, we don't need a, a building department. We don't need staff doing plan checks if the plans aren't coming in. So anyway, I, I appreciate what was being said, I appreciate that this came back. Hang on, Mr. Prescott, let me finish. And then, but at the same time, come back and let us know. Maybe we're the ones, obviously we have the say so to provide to somebody, an extra body to do that kind of work. And I'm sure that, you know, they can do other work as well. But anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Prescott, your comments?
Mayor Frutos, Vice Mayor Talamontes, you're right. We should have at least come back and let the council know where we were as far as staffing and I'll, I'll own that and we'll be better in the future. And we'll just be straightforward about that fact when we don't have the staff. We try to get it all done, we want to serve, you know, but we got to be realistic. So appreciate that comment and I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Councilmember Schultz, I saw your hand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know it's getting late, I just wanted to specifically address Mr. Prescott's last comment. We probably don't get to say thank you often enough to staff and I know that we are asking you to go in a million different directions and I myself am guilty of that tonight when I bring a, you know, a new agenda item. But look, we're all in it together, I know it's very difficult. So thank you for everything you're doing. And I appreciate you, your comments, Mr. Prescott, because, you know, we want, everything that we do, we have to be above board, we want to be in full compliance with municipal code. So looking forward to seeing the report next year. And, and just know that while we are asking a lot of you, your work is appreciated by this council.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer and then Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Anthony, you have the mic.
I've said this before, you know, we, we took a hiring freeze back in 2018 and Measure P came through and 2020 was supposed to be the year we caught up and COVID hit us. So I mean, it's nobody's fault, there's no major blame going around, but you know, staffing levels are, you know, noticeably short, that's not a new thing. But it's time for us to, you know, put our heads together and see what we can do about that. So I mean, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing, I appreciate you putting this together. I mean, of course, all the reports, we, we are so thankful for the staff putting this together, but you know, we can do more. Thank you.
Councilmembers, if there's no further on this item, this is a note and file. Just want to sum up what the council members said, Mr. Prescott, you and your team, thank you. Thank you for what you do day in and day out to the team. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item, council comments. This is a time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Who would like to go first?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Do we need a motion to note and file that report? No? Okay.
There's no action required. It was just a note and file. We're all good.
Thank you.
Moving on, who would like to report out, who would like to be first? All right, Councilmember Schultz, you're up to bat, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suppose that's what I get for tonight. I'll be very brief.
It's all love.
Wednesday, January 13th, I had a chance to meet with Burbank Young Professionals, excellent group, terrific experience. The following day, I joined my colleague Vice Mayor Talamontes at the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission. And later that week, I actually was able to join for their annual event. I'll let Vice Mayor Talamontes as the official liaison report back further on any of those activities. I was also in attendance at the Burbank Police Commission alongside you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll let you report back on those activities. And finally, had a chance to attend the Valley Economic Alliance's annual event alongside you and Councilmember Anthony as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next person, who would like to step up? Seeing nobody looking at me, Councilmember Springer. You're up to bat.
I attended USC Social Justice and Policing First Step. And there, there will be three presentations and I have to say it was excellent. It was just an hour or an hour and a half. I attended the Parks and Rec Board for my first time as the liaison. I had a one-minute comment on the Metro Construction Committee for the I-5. I attended the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments meeting and the Downtown Burbank TOD workshop. Staff did a great job on that. Excellent. It's just really coming along. And I spoke with a troop of fifth grade Cub Scouts and that was, I think we should all memorize their oath. And last night, I attended the Transportation Commission meeting. That does it.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, January 14th, I did a citywide training, it was a three-hour training, it was called Practicing a Positive Mindset During Uncertain Times. And I was so excited to see a bunch of other people, a bunch of other city staff members from all different departments there, just talking freely and openly about stressors and dealing with not just the pandemic, but everything around it, the economic insecurity and, and how we do our jobs. And it was very informative, it was, if you've ever read the books, The Secret or The Power of Now, and that idea of putting that positive mindset into action and how we interact with people, it was so very informative and, and I'm grateful that the city put that together and the fact that there were so many other city staff members there from, from a variety of different departments, that was really great. I had a number of meetings last week with private residents and private groups, all of which who were very different politically minded than myself. I spent a lot of time the last few weeks really reaching out to different groups and different thought types to get a diversity of ideas because, you know, I would like to bring that to the council over the next couple of years. So I continue to do so, if anyone wants to contact me, my door is always open, my email is publicly available. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items. Like Councilmember Schultz mentioned, we both attended the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission meeting. I also was invited to the John Burrows Junior Statesman of America Friends and Family Night Zoom meeting. I'd like to thank President Sophia Moore for inviting me. Let's see, what else? We did a, like Councilmember Springer mentioned, I also did a public comment with Metro Construction Committee, the I-5 virtual meeting. And as, as Councilmember Schultz mentioned, in regards to what the Burbank Arts, this is put on by the Burbank Cultural Arts Committee, it's called the Virtual, Virtually Burbank Alone Together January Event. And it was, we had like five, five panelists in the discussion and our very own Elizabeth Goldman, Burbank Library Services Director, was one of the panelists, I'd like to thank her for participating. And I also like to thank Cindy Pease, Leah Harrison and Eric Connor for putting this together and bringing it to the community. So it was very successful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll report out now, going back to Wednesday, January the 13th, I attended the Board of Library Trustees January meeting. I'm not going to report too much out because they're gearing up to do a presentation for us very soon, so I don't want to take their thunder, they're really working hard and we're very lucky to have them on the board, so I won't report out on that one. On Thursday, January the 14th, I attended the Burbank Association of Realtors or 2021 Kickoff Meeting via Zoom. Then on, later on that day, I attended the League of California Cities Public Safety Policy Committee meeting. A lot was spent on the new legislation that's coming out from Sacramento, on a lot of different police reform bills with anything and everything dealing with, with law enforcement. So I encourage my council members, when you get some time, as, as with everything else that we're doing, a lot of reading, look at some of the bills that are being proposed up in Sacramento. And when the opportunity comes, we can agendize it and weigh in. But I did attend that meeting representing us. I did attend the Bret Hart Elementary School PTA meeting. With my background as a police officer, I gave my two cents on the school site safety plan. I attended along with Councilmember Schultz the Burbank Masonic Lodge Virtual Installation Ceremony. And they do apologize again, sir, they felt really bad not acknowledging you. So they, they want to, again, for me to convey their apologies. And you're always welcome to attend any meeting of the Masonic Lodge members, you're always welcome, sir. Then on Tuesday, the 19th, we didn't have a council meeting, but I did attend the Providencia Elementary PTA meeting. Again, with my background, I kind of listened from the principal, their school site safety plan, gave my two cents, especially because there's a post office. And with my background of, of being part of the hazardous materials devices section within LAPD, we talked about suspicious packages and with the post office being pretty much catty corner, I brought some different topic to the mix of the conversation. I did have a via Zoom meeting with the new executive director and the new president of the Chamber Board. Then I attended the Police Commission meeting with our Councilmember Schultz. A lot was spent on the letter and our joint meeting, so without taking their thunder, there's really nothing to report out except respect to the commission that wants to make their presentation to the council. And you'll be getting a copy of their letter in our weekly pre-council folder that's got all the agenda items for us to prepare for that council meeting. And then I attended the actual Chamber of Commerce with our City Manager who did an update presentation of our grants and what's being offered to small businesses. So I really appreciate Mr. City Manager being involved in that, thank you. Then I had a meeting via Zoom Friday night with a community member, Carmenita Hilger, and we talked about her ideas of Burbank's recovery as we start to come out of this COVID-19. And I do appreciate her time and energy and spending some time with me to give me her thoughts. And then representing our city, I attended the Los Angeles County City Selection for Committee members. And the one that really affects us is the vote I took to support the continuance of former Mayor Ara Najarian, who's currently a council member in Glendale. He puts a lot of passion and love and most important, he's always accessible. So any council member, you can always reach out and talk about public transportation. I know I've heard Councilmember Constantine Anthony several times talk about public transportation and Nick Schultz and Sharon. By all means, he got the vote, he's still representing us and he definitely wants to me to convey the message that he is accessible, he's a phone call away if you wish or a Zoom meeting, but he is our representative in transportation. Thank you, council members, for listening to me and thank you for your update to the members of the community of what your engagement is outside of a Tuesday night meeting. Now, moving on to the final item, this is a time of introduction of any additional items. Do council member have, have any items they wish to introduce for a future council meeting? Councilmember Anthony followed by Vice Mayor Talamontes. Go ahead, Councilmember Anthony.
Just double checking with the City Manager, the, the prior agenda item.
I got the nod, you're lock and loaded, sir, ready to roll. Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to bring back an agenda item on making it mandatory for all city employees to wear their mask inside city buildings.
As the City Manager, got that? Thank you, sir. Any other council members wish to add something to the future agenda items? Seeing none, I will now begin to adjourn the meeting in memory of Elaine Baird to Wednesday, January 27th at 1:30 PM tomorrow for a goal-setting special meeting through an online meeting process. The public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city's webpage, and that is burbankca.gov/ecomments. Again, that email to give a comment for tomorrow's special council goal session meeting will be burbankca.gov/ecomments. By emailing the City Council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov. Again, if you want to email the entire council, it's citycouncil@burbankca.gov. Or you can call in directly to the council's special goal-setting meeting tomorrow at Again, the meeting's going to start at 1:30 PM. So if you want to call, that number again is 818-238-3335. Thank you, council members, thank you, community members. Good night.